Minute for the world to catch up. Hello, everyone. So it says forty-five, but we came on at forty-four, but we dialed in at the wrong time. So this is on Comorosk, on Comorosk, and Comorosk with the four forty-four, four forty-five, for state news. Greetings from Malibu, California. Oh, magic trick. Don't need that. So we'll start out with weather. So the weather is sixty degrees here in Malibu. And today there was a, excuse me very much, need a little bit of a drink and a plug, Unisat. I work for them. Great example of being president for a company that you actually don't get paid. You can be president and not get paid. It's a thing. So sixty degrees out in the Malibu, or at least in area. There was a big parade downtown for the Dodgers, which you heard it here first, that they were gonna go seven games and the Dodgers would win. Ta-da, we predicted it. Now, if we could only predict horse racing and who's gonna win the lottery, that'd be grand. So I'm trying to see the network return, which doesn't seem to be working on my iPhone six S. Yeah, that's an iPhone six S, see? It's a real one. It still works. But we're having a problem with our feed. So we can't see our return. So technology, one person operation. So, okay? So it was a big parade. Hopefully this went peaceful and, because we have been keeping track, they've been getting everything organized here. So first off, this live version doesn't seem to be working. So if it's recorded, you're gonna see graphics. You'll see graphics here. That's how you know it's been edited, because we don't have a person to type in titles. There will be a planning commission today at six thirty. Big issue is Caltrans, lighting along PCH, crosswalk, sidewalks, these kind of things. So you're expected to tune in via the City of Malibu's website, or you can watch it perhaps here on this link, because we're gonna do a special broadcast of the City of Malibu Planning Commission meeting with live reaction. So I don't know how it's gonna work. First time we've ever done that one. We put the numbers before. Here, I'll show you what the device is. This device is gonna generate the numbers to put on the planning commission. Yeah, that's gonna be pretty cool. So we're gonna turn it around, put some live reactions in there and see how it works. You know, it's, it's the planning commission meeting. They record it. So if you wanna see a different take on it, tune in. And we'll put that link here. So I'll turn it around. Other thing too is, I should have put more effort into it, but there was a big event. By the way, that's the planning commission agenda. Okay? And if you're watching this on Nextdoor or Facebook, there's a link to this. Well, Nextdoor for sure. Not necessarily positive about Facebook. Facebook's more like national, where Nextdoor is Nextdoor, Malibu. So there you go. Okay. The guys are following me today, see? Bobbing and stuff. They wanna get, they wanna get a view of the room. Uh, let's see. The other one was from Caitlin, account executive for a company called, oh, I'm sorry, you know, I, Ballot Spear? Um, I didn't quite go over this enough, but it was an event that went on over the weekend. And they supplied me with B-roll, all the necessary pictures and text to go with the story, to put a story together. In fact, this could be a project to put together. So they did raise a good amount of money for charity. And we're kind of, well, I feel bad that we missed it. So if you have a story idea, feel free to email me here at howthewestwaswon@AOL.com. And I'll put that here. How, it's the first letter, howthewestwaswon@AOL.com. So we'll touch base on that story again. So Kate, sorry if I didn't get to. So it's not the best one to do anyway, because we have technical issues. So we'll turn it around and we'll take a look at all the B-roll material and all the texts on it. So I just wanna acknowledge I have your email right here, okay, on the desk. The other thing, oh, it's not on the desk now. It's on the two-sort part, floor. The other thing too is, oopsie, I voted. Yes, you, today is the last day, well, yeah, two days. Yeah, till, no, tomorrow, the fourth, to vote. To RSVP or vote in person and say, no, comma, thank you. No, that's the preference, you know, that's, you know, we got some people advocating for it and, well, you know, gotta keep it kind of fair. And so some of us say, no. And see, also a plug for me, because look, no poly, no politic NPP, no political preference governor. Yeah, California. This is gonna ramp up soon. It really is, because after this election, we're gonna get a better feel for how people are voting. You know, if they'll come out and vote, who the significant others are coming out, Democrats, Republicans, that kind of stuff. Oh, see, look at the camera. See, look, encoder overload. That's like too much information. That's giving me a message, like too much. Okay, I'll stop it. So tonight, Planning Commission meeting, six thirty. Catch it on the City of Malibu's website, or you can catch it here, our special edition, live coverage, our attempt at live coverage. Otherwise, we'll just post a link and you can watch it without the numbers or reaction. So, actually, it's already posted. So, yeah, it's already, if you go to the comments, you'll see it there. Uh, the other little item is, we did attend this on the twenty-ninth. And it looks promising, like there will be indeed a school separation. That is high hopes for it, that there will be school separation between Santa Monica and Malibu Unified School District. This has been years in the making and it just may happen. Okay? The two-sort pile. And here's a little bit of information. On the Palisades fire, there's been more information released. We have a, the county or federal government has a suspect innocent until proven guilty. So we're trying to get more information on that as well. We hope they're treating him humanely while he's in custody. So it seems like he has a good lawyer as well. So high hopes that it turns out justful. Yeah, justice is served. And the other thing is, the City of Malibu is looking for a city manager or somebody like that. This guy's name kind of popped up on thirty-first and Christopher Smith? Well, that's a pretty basic name. His name came up. Works in Santa Monica, so he might make his way over here. And that was the DOJ. That was the press release about the Palisades fire, which it's almost the anniversary of the Franklin fire, which we did do some initial reporting and we never quite finished the story. So working on it. The other thing too is, we get our lighting by, by God. Lighting by God, the sun. And so the times changed. And so we have to change our clocks. We've been doing a lot of that. Look, I got two. So that was not fun. All the clocks here had to be changed. There's a Bose radio back there that needs to be changed and it has a nine volt and it was dead. So check your smoke detectors, nine volt batteries or double A's, whatever they use. They tend to use nine volts. But go ahead and check them. See, our clock radio over there needs to be changed out. And see, once again, your voter locations. You can go to these places if you're in Malibu, or just go to what it says right there, locator.labot.gov. So we'll be providing a little more coverage tomorrow. You know, sometimes it's easier to stay on live.
Hi, everyone. If we could start sitting down, we're gonna get ready to start the meeting in a minute or two.
And this, you just tune in at the right time, but at least we know we're on, our equipment's working, functioning. That might be what we do in the future. Might take a weather cam and put that on live. Helen Conrad, she's the councilwoman, and she provides a link to some cameras. So might be a good idea. That'll make sure all our equipment is functioning properly before we kind of in a mad rush to get on live. So you can watch other stuff at the same time. Not a bad idea. Thank you, Helen. And the other thing I wanna finish off, we have like five minutes, and that is, I wanna show you something. This is my Tiffany case, as some of you know, old, beat up, been around. My press pass, here's my press pass for LAPD. I need to get, I need to get the updated one, but they had a game today, you know, parade, a game parade. There was a news article in the LA Times about the press and how they dress and how they can tell the friendlies from foe, you know, the people that are trying to cause problems. And you really can't tell nowadays, because instead of...
Please be seated and please minimize your talking, turn off any cell phones. Thank you.
This is what a professional camera looks like. It's retired. It still works. But this is what traditional camera crews use. So now, camera crews use this as well. So is there having a hard time figuring out who is of news media or the press? Because anybody could be the press.
Good evening, Malibu. I'd like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting of November third, 2025. This meeting is being held in both a hybrid format that allows members of the public to participate in person or remotely via Zoom. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request to speak form to the clerk before your item is called. Only in-person participants may donate or accept donations of time. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to comment on is called. Commissioners, when you have a comment, please raise your hand and I will call in you in turn so we can make sure our discussion is clear for the record and for the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Kamens?
Here.
Commissioner Maza?
Here.
Commissioner Peak?
Here.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Here.
Chair Leonard?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Do the pledge of allegiance. Scott Dietrich, would you please lead us?
Hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda as staff recommends with item four B, continue to December first, 2025, and item four D to continue to a date uncertain.
Okay, do we have a consensus? Okay. Do we have a consensus or do we need a roll call?
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Kamens?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
You, the motion carries.
Okay. May I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please, Rebecca?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on October twenty-fourth, 2025.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to item two A, written oral communications from the public. Let's see, we got Brian Zinn first. You got two minutes. After that, we'll have Arthur Kelly and then Paul Crisanti. You have one minute donated also.
Yes.
Okay, so you have four total.
Okay. Thank you for having me. Hope you had a good weekend. I'm here again to talk about the PCH roundabout quick build project. I just wanted to raise a few more points that I couldn't raise last time and since having the last meeting. Starstop traffic tends to create more pollution as opposed to driving a continuous speed. That's my understanding of how it works. Typically in cities, there's more pollution as opposed to the highways, because you're starting and stopping and that's more RPMs, more petrol being spent. Another point I have to raise is that my street wasn't marked at all on the last drawings I saw. I know it's a work in progress and there will be changes made, but I just thought that's something that had to be noted. More parking in front of my home will, I think, decrease the privacy that I currently have. I already have people coming up my private street to take photos and look around and walk around my property. And I think having more people parking around my home at PCH and stuff like that would decrease my privacy and security. I think that's one more thing to think about with having more people in the area. Coming out of my street, I'll have to also watch for even more, for more obstacles or people such as the pedestrians, the cyclists, and for the parked cars that will be on PCH now. We haven't been given a specific amount of parking spaces or crosswalks that will be put in. As far as I know, I haven't been given anything like that, any numbers for parking spaces, crosswalks, and for the maximum capacity of the beach as it is. Currently, I'm not sure how many parking spaces are on the beach parking, but Lapeheda Beach, which is right at Encinal, is quite small. I'm not sure how many more people it can support visiting parking on the PCH. Also, we will be encouraging more caravans to park on PCH, I think, with having more parking. And currently, they're an issue because they don't leave when they're supposed to. They don't listen to the limits that have been imposed on caravan parking or parking of any kind. If the one-lane roundabout does get blocked for any reason, a breakdown, an accident or anything, it could limit traffic in one direction or even both directions, depending on the way people have to go. Initially, there was no speed limit change, as far as I understood. When I came to the first meeting for the roundabouts, there would be no speed limit change. So it would have been a fifty or a fifty-five through the one-lane section. But as of the last meeting, I don't remember the exact numbers, but I believe it would go from a fifty to a forty to a thirty to a twenty-five or something like that, to reduce the speed through the one-lane section, which is fine. It's just, I'd like to know what else has been changed and not disclosed, what other things have been remedied and not been told to us. I've lived around roundabouts all my life and what I see a lot is that people will slow down because they have to go around the roundabout and then immediately accelerate to make up for the speed they've lost or to make up for the time they've lost to slow down. I think it would be the same situation happening here, even if it is a one-lane roundabout. But it's just something to consider, that people drive dangerously and they will continue to drive dangerously regardless of a roundabout, before and after the roundabout has finished. That's my time and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Have you been attending the workshops?
Uh, no, I have been told about them though.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have Paul? So Arthur, you donated time, correct?
Okay, thank you. I'm here to do something unpleasant. Your behavior at the last meeting was atrocious. I cannot tell you that sitting through a meeting where there's three of you talking at one time, when only one of you is recognized, is totally inappropriate. It's not useful. It's not a good way to run meetings and it's really not a good look for the person who keeps interrupting everybody else. It's not good. Try not to do that anymore. Try to have an orderly meeting. The other thing I would like to say is, since we, roundabouts can be discussed in two A, is I think it's an idea that deserves a try. And so please, give it a shot. Treat the people from Caltrans well. We don't wanna repeat the reaction we got from District twenty-nine after certain people gave them a hard time about replacing a tank in Bush Drive. And they went away for two years before they came back again. And that was, did not get done before the Woolsey fire. We need help. We need it now. Treat the people who are specialists and come here to testify in favor of doing something. Let them do it.
Thank you. Thank you. Merrill?
Thank you for your time and service. My appeal is more of, we know all this is very complex. I've worked on highway safety stuff for twenty-five, thirty years and I persist and I get done what I can get done. You all have a lot of knowledge and history up there about our community. I've gotten some feedback about what's gone on recently and I would implore you all to try to make progress and not have the goal of perfection in mind here. We only have a certain amount of time and I'm concerned, this may or may not be true, that if we don't get certain things done in a certain timeframe, we may lose certain funding. So, I mean, I've heard some big numbers. I don't think that does any of us any good. So I would implore you to make as much progress forward as we can. I've been to Europe. Roundabouts, I've seen work very effectively. If we put a roundabout in in a couple of different places and it doesn't work, we can always go back. But it's been highly effective in places I've seen. So since Paul is Mr. Water Storage, anything we can do to improve water storage, approving ancillary tanks on people's properties, you know, during the rebuilds, others, and if we get the chance to approve any big tanks, I would strongly support anything, because since Woolsey, the only thing I know is we've enlarged some lines over by Encinal, but I don't think we've put in any new big storage tanks. And obviously, we ran out of water during Woolsey. We ran out of water, Malibu Palisades. Hopefully, the connectors go through, which are on the diagram, on the drawing board now. But let's make as much progress forward as we can, as fast as we can, because we've got a lot to do. Thank you to everybody who's been here a long time.
Thank you, Merrill. It's nice to see you. That, do we have anyone online?
There is one raised hand in the meeting and I would also ask for the commission's patience a little bit tonight. We don't have Parker with us. He's on his honeymoon, so congratulations to him.
Congratulations, Parker.
But the two of us are figuring this out.
Okay.
Anne? Hello? Do you hear me?
Yep, we hear you. You're fine.
Hello. Hey, listen, I'm watching you guys with Time Code on the other version, which you could find on Nextdoor. So if you go on Nextdoor and you click on the agenda link for this meeting, I'm not a ghost. You have a picture. It looks like the carpet there. Hey, Paul, how you doing? So if you go there, you can watch the Time Code version and there's live reactions. So you can react live and text and everything at the same time. So keep doing a great job. And just also want to remind everybody, I'm running for California governor. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. All right. Tyler, do you have a director report?
Luckily for me, our community development director is here today.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't see you, Yolanda. Sorry.
We have some technical difficulties, but good to see everybody.
Nice to see you too.
We're just gonna do it with other power. Sorry, okay? Wanted to provide you with an update on our Palisades rebuilds. We have a hundred and seventy-five applications that have come through the planning department, division, I'm sorry. Ninety-five of them have been approved. So those are great news. As far as a portion that goes to the construction review of the building plan check, we have received twenty-two applications and we have approved eleven. We're also working with five more families to get approval this week and expecting to see another ten families coming into building plan check. We invite every family to come and visit us to the rebuild center. Those that haven't made it, we are taking appointments, but we also are taking walk-ins. I'm there every Friday to help streamline, make decisions, anything that I can do to help the families move forward. As far as the Woolsey fire, happy to report that we continue giving certificate of occupancies to the families that are completing their homes. So far, we have issued two hundred and ten certificate of occupancies and we have ninety-seven homes are still under construction. So today, we have issued three hundred and sixty-four permits. And then lastly, just a few reminders and invite our community, we have several events coming up. November thirteenth, we'll be hosting a Design Professionals meeting for fire rebuilds here at City Hall from three to four PM. There are also a PoliBoo Recovery Expo that is gonna be held at the Pacific Palisade Village from eleven to two PM on November sixteenth. And then a family gathering for the Palisades rebuilds on November eighteenth from eleven to one o'clock here at the, at City Council Chambers. And finally, our events for December, a Design Professional meeting that will also happen here, the Council Chambers, from three to four. And that's all the items that I have to report for this meeting.
Thank you. Move on to the consent calendar, sir?
I'm where we accept the consent calendar. I'll second that unless we need a roll call or anything.
Okay.
There is one item on the consent calendar that we will need to have a roll call vote, because it does involve a resolution.
Whenever you're ready.
So this is for item three B one, the extension of CDP twelve dash zero nine five. Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Kamens?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to four A. I'm sorry, so approval amendments is all taken care of?
Yes, yes, that's my consensus.
Okay. All right, we're gonna move on to four A. Four A is a CDP number twenty-five dash zero zero nine. It's an application to install nineteen new guardrails, twenty-two new or upgraded curb ramps, six thousand nine hundred and fifty-six linear feet of new sidewalks, three new retaining walls, two real, realigned intersections and forty-two new light poles, fifteen miles of new upgraded bike lanes and vehicle pullouts for law enforcement use, median reconstruction in various locations and associated roadway improvements along Pacific Coast Highway with the public right of way. And this is continued from October twentieth, 2025. Yeah, let's start off with disclosures. Let's start off with disclosures.
I will disclose that-
There are no disclosures required for citywide, which I, thank you.
There's, there are, because this is continued from last time. So just anything that might have changed from last time.
Okay, I spoke with some folks at Pepperdine and kind of further clarified some of their thoughts on the sidewalk in front of the grass between John Tyler and Malibu Canyon.
I attempted to read a couple hundred emails today. That's it.
I spoke with some folks at Pepperdine, and I also spoke with some folks at LA County Public Works and LA Transportation, and I spoke with Lee from Caltrans, and I think I spoke with Tyler and Skylar.
I did have conversation, two conversations today with Tyler, and besides that, no other disclosures since the last meeting.
I did speak to Pepperdine and several folks from the community, and that's my additional disclosure.
And then for all the commissioners, just if you can do a voice comment that any of your disclosures will not change your vote or have any impact from last time.
They will not.
Nope.
Correct. Correct.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, we'll go to the presentation.
Yeah, real quick, Chair, if I may, before we, Adam, before you begin, just want to bring the commission to where we came from. So last meeting, the Planning Commission asked Caltrans to address a few items. They have tried to address as much as they can, and they're going to be presenting that tonight. Adam's gonna touch on that tonight. Just want to remind the commission that they have a December 1 deadline to meet their funding requirements to obtain a CDP. Not saying we have to approve or deny, but you know, if we can make a decision tonight, that's, that's what they're looking for.
Okay.
Go ahead, Adam. Thanks.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Great. Okay, good evening, everybody. As noted, the project tonight is coastal development permit number 25-009. Next slide, please. So just quick project background, I'm just gonna hit the high levels on the presentation, not gonna go through the whole thing again, but Caltrans also has a follow-up presentation. They'll get into some more details on some of those follow-ups that Tyler mentioned. So the project was submitted on March 13, 2025. Caltrans presented the project to the City Council on June 23, 2025. The project was presented to the Public Works Committee on July 23, 2025, and the project was presented to Planning Commission on October 20 and was continued to tonight. Next slide, please. So just a reminder on the project boundaries here, the Ventura County line on the left and Serra Road on the right, roughly 15 miles of PCH. Next slide, please. So just a few updates since the last meeting on some of the scope of work. So the number of light poles has been reduced to 27 new light poles and 10 miles of new or upgraded bike lanes, and median reconstruction will now happen at only three locations. Next slide, please. And again, the associated roadway improvements that are being proposed, this hasn't changed, but repaving, crosswalk striping, new signals, new left turn, lengthened left turn pockets, new radar feedback signs, traffic signal timing, and new traffic signs. Next slide, please. So again, this project is exempt from CEQA per sections 15301A and E as well as 15303D. Next slide, please. So since the October 20 Planning Commission meeting, the city has received approximately 71 letters. That includes correspondence from Pepperdine University and Malibu Country Homeowners Estates. Of the 71 letters, the vast majority have spoken in favor of the project. Next slide, please. And in reference to some of the requests for information and updates from the commission on, from last meeting, Caltrans has provided updated sheets on the roadway signs, updated sheets on the sidewalk, proposed sidewalk along Corral Canyon Beach, and updated lighting plan sheets, and correspondence from the California Coastal Commission on the continuous bikeway inquiry that the commission had. Next slide, please. And one thing, staff would like to propose a condition of approval to add to the resolution relative to lighting and the dark sky ordinance. Staff proposes for your consideration stating Caltrans shall utilize light fixtures that are dark sky compliant to the maximum extent feasible. The light fixtures shall be fully shielded, 3,000 Kelvin in color temperature, directed downward, and must not exceed the light trespass limits on adjacent properties listed in MMC Section 1741-050G unless necessary for adequate ingress egress reasonably determined by the Community Development Director. And city staff shall inspect the installed lights at the cost of Caltrans and confirm compliance with this condition. So that ends my presentation, and as stated, Caltrans has a follow-up presentation detailing some more of those follow-ups. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we have the applicant team. We have Nancy, Lee, and Mustaf.
Good evening, Commissioners and everyone. Thank you for having me back to provide some update tonight.
Okay, stop their time until we get the presentation up.
Okay. So just a few updates as Adam has provided. So the plant sheet modification that was asked last time, we will be able to comply with that and provide a new sign as requested. The other item was about the sidewalk from Malibu Canyon to John Tyler. This is in front of Pepperdine University. The third item is eliminating parking and provide continuous Class II bike lane, and the third one is the cross-section detail for the Corral Canyon to Malibu Seafood area, the sidewalk and the street lighting. So for the sign, this is the sign that will be replaced and will be installed as requested. As far as the Corral Canyon, I mean, Corral sidewalk, this is the stretch, and this is the cross-section that we have developed. There will be enough space for the parking. We will have for one of the cross-section we've shown up there where we have no parking allowed, it will be about 12 foot to about 12 and a half foot that we have for parking and then six-foot sidewalk. And the other section shown where parking is limited or allowed at certain time, the space that we have is about 9.5 feet to about 14 feet, so it vary in that section. And the bike lane, we have modified a little due to the median work that we're not going to reduce anymore. We have updated that for the northbound is about 3.5 mile and the southbound is 5.6. The reason we are not able to provide continuous Class II bike lane is because at the intersection, you will, especially we have north left turn or right turn lane, we don't have enough space to provide any bike in that location. And then wherever we have parking, we will not be able to eliminate parking and provide continuous bike through there. We did reach out to Coastal Commission about eliminating parking. They do have, we had to go through a very lengthy process in order to eliminate parking because we will not be able to provide replacement parking, which is required when we eliminate parking along PCH. So that is one reason why we're not be able to provide continuous Class II bike. And the other thing, I think we have checked the Malibu use, land use is also inconsistent with the Malibu land use. It require parking, also providing access to the public along the coastal. As far as lighting, we did went back and have our engineer reevaluated. So we did reduce, I should see on the table, one location that we have reduced drastically, I think is at Ramirez. It was proposed before 10, and now it's 2. And then the other location, Heather Cliff, I believe it was 1, we actually increased to 3. And the following slide will show you the existing and the proposed light. This is just the graphic of the location that's on the table. So this is at John Tyler. If you see, the intersection does have lighting. We currently have existing four lighting at the intersection, and we're proposing two new lighting with the blue light. Those are the proposed on the screen. At Malibu Seafood, the blue is the proposed lighting. We are proposing four. Currently, it does not have any lighting there. This is at Ramirez Mesa, existing, we have two, which is close by the intersection, is seven of Ramirez itself and the other place across the street. And we are proposing two additional lighting at this location. This is at Suma View and Sumiris. Currently, we have seven mainly at the intersection, just at the Sumiris, we have, just at that intersection itself, is six existing lighting. But in between the two intersection, you don't have anything, so we're proposing eight more in this location, as you could see, as shown in the blue light. And this is at Cavalery. We have existing one, and we're proposing three more, are shown there mainly at the intersection. And Heather Cliff, at the intersection, you don't have any lighting, so we're proposing three more right there. It seem to have it on the side street. Now, and Butch, existing is four at the intersection, and we're proposing five more in between the two intersection itself. And as I say, the lighting are needed to enhance safety and to reduce collision at night. We have evaluated, and we believe these lighting are really needed for nighttime and to prevent dark accident and improve the safety for the motorists and for the pedestrian. So, thank you.
Lee? Okay, you want us, so you want to save your time for rebuttal? All right, we're gonna move on to public comments. Pat Healy, you're first. Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. I'm gonna call a few names. Next is Justin Ornstein, then Scott Dietrich, Michelle Shane, Paul Crisanti. So if you guys could be ready.
Good evening, Commissioners. If you're going to approve this plan, Slow Growth has the following comments. "We prefer no streetlights in western Malibu, but can support putting trend. Caltrans proposed streetlights at intersections, but not elsewhere on the highway. There are many other causes of collisions other than the lack of lighting, such as speeding, drunk driving, texting, etc. Caltrans failed to prove lack of lighting was the actual cause of the accidents and failed to show how lighting of any of these locations would prevent future collisions. Besides streetlights violate the general plan and are prohibited in Escha. Beaches and streams are Escha and are to remain dark. Zuma Beach doesn't have streetlights. Besides not being needed for safety, an additional reason for not putting streetlights across from Malibu Seafood is they are proposed along a beach, which is Escha. If any streetlights are proposed at a stream that is actually proven necessary for safety, they should be placed as far away from the Escha as possible with no light trespass. To be a dark sky compliant, 3,000 Kelvin is not enough. The lights must be fully shielded and facing downward. Lighting of the highway itself only should be allowed. There should be no light trespass off the highway, including light glow. Most of the accidents occur in eastern Malibu where PCH streetlights are abundant, and the east end of Malibu has many more, has, and the east end of Malibu has many more accidents than the dark west of Malibu. If the commission votes for non-contiguous bike lanes, there are ways to make them more protective. Rumble strips is one of the ways. We support Pepperdine and their opposition to sidewalks along their campus. We don't understand the purpose of putting six-foot wide sidewalks along Dan Blocker Beach. Zuma Beach doesn't have sidewalk, so why are they needed there? Sidewalks promote the urbanization of this area in western Malibu. Also, where people park now varies and width, and we're concerned that sidewalks will result in the less of each parking. We have a concern that a study indicates that narrowing of car lanes from 12 feet to in width to 11 feet creates a safety hazard. If bike lanes and sidewalks result in the narrowing of lanes, it's not making PCH safer, and this should be taken into account in making your decision. Thank you."
Thank you, Pat. Justin Ornstein?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. My name is Justin Ornstein, and I'm the Transportation Deputy for LA County Supervisor Lindsay Horvath. I'm here this evening once again to convey the supervisor's unwavering support for this project and safety improvements up and down PCH. I would like to extend a big thank you to Director Roberts, Lee Haber, Nancy Pei, and all of the Caltrans staff who have been working day in and day out to make PCH a safer experience for Malibu residents. And to the many Malibu stakeholders who have been advocating tirelessly for a safer PCH, thank you, thank you, thank you. Data and multiple studies conducted by Caltrans, the CHP, the Sheriff's Department, and the City of Malibu have documented the unsafe conditions of PCH. In fact, each of the improvements being considered this evening is a recommendation that came from a January 2024 road safety audit that came in direct response to the tragic deaths of four Pepperdine students just over two years ago. Since 2010, we've seen 62 fatalities and more than 100 serious injuries along this 21-mile stretch of PCH. And each time, we hear condolences, messages of heavy hearts, thoughts and prayers. You have an opportunity this evening to help prevent tragedies like this from happening again. In fact, one of the proposed sidewalks between John Tyler and Malibu Canyon will offer safe access for children, families, and students to and from Malibu Bluff Park. I would be remiss if I didn't address this sidewalk in more detail. The university has raised two primary concerns with the sidewalk, emergency vehicle access and sidewalk connectivity. With regard to emergency vehicle access, the Caltrans design ensures that there would be no encroachment on established helicopter zones or reservoir access. Second, the current design includes a six-inch curb on the PCH side, which would not impede first responder routes, and mountable curb options are available. Lastly, sidewalk construction would be phased to maintain emergency access at all times. No encouragement on established helicopter zones- Pepperdine's recent letter dated November 3 insinuates that the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department is opposed to the sidewalk because it is discontinuous. This is not the understanding of our office. LASD has been an incredible partner in advocating for pedestrian safety, and like Supervisor Horvath, would prefer to see safe contiguous sidewalks throughout Malibu. But shovels have to go in the ground in order to make that a reality, and it can and should start here. Our office, for one, believes that a sidewalk at this location is safer than no sidewalk at all. More than 1,200 comments were made during the public comment period on Caltrans's PCH master plan. There was, of course, a preference for improvements that support cycling, pedestrian access, and transit infrastructure, but that wasn't the highlight for us. What was most telling is, is that the least favored option was keeping the road in its current condition. Please listen to the Malibu residents and visitors who have already weighed in. These improvements will save lives, and I respectfully urge the commission-
Thank you.
-to grant the CDP.
Scott?
Thank you, Chair Leonard and Commissioners. What do we want Malibu to be? They're trying to couch this in terms of safety. They're adding tons and tons of concrete. I wish you guys would have gotten the report from the Public Works Commission. We raised many objections, specifically to that stupid sidewalk they're trying to push that nobody's gonna use. Think about this. Most people, when they come into Mal- Most people, when they come into Malibu from the canyon or up the coast, what do they see? They see grass coming down to the highway. It sets the tone for rural Malibu. It sets the tone that follows our vision statement. How many, I want to ask you guys a question. How many of you, before they started pushing this project for western Malibu, had people demanding a sidewalk at Pepperdine? I don't think so. There's a lot wrong with this proposal. There's some right with it. We need a few sidewalks, and Michelle Shane, I think, will talk about them. And we need some bike lanes. I hate the fact that they're discontinuous. But we should have Class 4 bike lanes. And we can do that without putting more concrete in. And that makes the bike safer. If you've got plastic poles up along the edge of the bike lane, emergency vehicles could run through those if they had to. But it separates maybe a 10-ton truck from a 20-pound carbon and aluminum bicyclist and might provide real safety. So yeah, put in a Class 4 bike lane, not a Class 2. Painting doesn't do much. What else? There's no mention in their report of Malibu's vision statement. And that's really what's at issue here. We don't need a lot more likes, and we've got to keep this rural every time that they're going to propose something. Oh, yeah, it's in the interest of safety. Is it really making anything safety, safer? I think our problem is you've got guys going 100 miles an hour. We're just about to launch our speed cameras. None of this is going to stop somebody going that desires to go 100. It doesn't affect those four Pepperdine girls. That was eastern Malibu.
Thank you, Scott. I have a question for you. One second, please. Scott, you stay up at the podium, please.
Yes, sir.
Are you speaking as a private citizen?
I am speaking as a private citizen.
You made it seem like you were speaking the recommendation of the Public Safety Commission. I wanted to get that clear for the record.
To be clear, the Public Works Commission, Public Works Commission, of which I'm vice chair, had many objections to this proposal that were not unfortunately passed on to you guys, because we debated a lot of that. I don't know how we fix this. I'm going to bring it up to council, get their advice, but that's what it is.
Do you want to say something?
Yes, I just want to make clear, every Commissioner has the right as a private citizen to make comments, but unless they're authorized by a vote to speak on behalf.
That's what I was concerned.
And your comments are valid and taken. But we just want to make clear to everyone here that you're speaking as an individual, not as the.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
My question for the last 15 years has been, why not once has any Commission ever come to us with any comments after studying something we're doing? Is there a city policy that disallows that?
Not that I know of.
Ever happened? And no Commissions have asked to do it.
You would have to talk to council about that.
Okay. All right.
I want to speak about the proposed corner of Malibu Canyon Road and Pacific Coast Highway. The metrics of that intersection were confirmed by Caltrans in 1991 in response to a letter that I wrote to them with a diagram requesting that two left-turn lanes be allowed from Malibu Canyon Road onto Pacific Coast Highway. And you'd be amazed by the response from that letter. It's like, huh, what? We don't need that. Well, that was Peter Su. He was very high in command at Caltrans, and I don't even know if he was that familiar with the intersection. But for the right turns, which existed at the time and exist today, what would be described as the number-two lane to the right side of the number-one lane, all the way to the grass at Pepperdine, is now a very large area suitable for large trucks to turn right from Malibu Canyon Road onto Pacific Coast Highway, which is what they need to do for deliveries, because the trucks are banned from Canaan Doom Road. They can do this maneuver without incursion much into the number-one, which is the fast lane of vehicles approaching from the east. And they could do this right turn on red. And currently, it's been fine. There really haven't been crashes there. But the proposal before you doesn't see the wisdom in this and wants to push out the curbs and push out the corner and create curbs and, well, gutter and what would likely be parking in front of Pepperdine, which is the Red Herring. Reverse angle parking in front of Pepperdine for the bicyclists to park their vehicles all day as they ride? Well, that gets them out of Bluffs Park, where the city has objected to their taking up the parking in the Bluffs Park from the uses that need to occur in Bluffs Park, such as the soccer and baseball events. So going back to what's the problem? There really isn't a problem for a sidewalk needed to be in front of Pepperdine. It kind of got thrown into this big, beautiful plan. It's not all that great of a plan. Maybe it doesn't need to be so big. And I would like the applicant to see the wisdom of plucking a few of these unnecessary items from their plan so that it preserves the integrity of the reason we're here, which is the pavement project, is what's to go on the pavement? What type of a paint job particularly? And some of the other things, yeah, they can get around to fixing. But it's not about in-full street lighting between Pepperdine and Ventura County line. That's not of issue. Those poles will remain and can be added later.
Thank you.
Should not jeopardize this project. Thank you.
All right, Paul?
Anyway, boring history. When I got here in '78, there was a lot of traffic on weekends, but I rode bicycles the rest of the time. And I rode back and forth to Santa Monica, and I never got hit, thank God. But somewhere around the late '80s, I became aware of the fact that my time was running out. And so bike lanes are a really good idea, and we don't. And then later on, when I was on the city council and we had the tragedy with the four girls from Pepperdine, I had a lot of hours sitting where you're sitting right now and listening to tragedy and death, and we have to try and fix it. Well, Caltrans has responded, and they're trying to fix it. And I want you to take them seriously, and I want you to let them try it. And if something turns out to be not so good, let's tell them to change it afterwards. But right now, you got to do it. It really needs to get done. I don't think I'm ever going to get back on a bicycle on Pacific Coast Highway. But it really is a shame that it's as deadly as it is right now. And if we put in bike lanes, I believe the bicyclists are actually required to use them at those locations where there are bicycle lanes. And that is something that would be very, very helpful. I know that it's very frustrating when you ride along and a huge peloton is taking up one and thinking about taking another lane on PCH. That is not getting along well. So take them seriously, conduct yourselves with decorum, and get it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council or Commission. Well, this has become an immediate top priority for both the city and Caltrans. The ongoing delays and lack of coordination are just putting lives at risk. And we've already seen the tragic consequences of the inaction on PCH for far too many years and for too many times when there's been an opportunity to correct that. We're not talking about abstract traffic studies or long-term proposals. This is about preventing the next fatality. PCH is the only major corridor and serves residents, students, families, first responders daily, and then not to mention all the folks that come in just to see Malibu from around the world. It's unconscionable that we're still waiting for meaningful safety infrastructure, speed control and enforcement after all of the loss. As you can see, there's a lot of the students here that are here to also speak, and you have so many from the community. After all the loss that this community has endured, we're just wondering, what's the holdup? How many more memorials do we have to have? Do we have to endure and gather before something meaningful actually happens and change occurs? It's time for leadership, and Caltrans is here to offer a solution. It may not be perfect in your eyes, but it's a solution, and it needs to be a start. You have only so many days to confirm this. It's really time to stop passing the responsibility back and forth and quibbling over, you know, really the way most of us see it, minor issues. Let's finalize a real and comprehensive plan for safety on PCH. And I just want to thank everyone here for your advocacy and sensitivity. But compassion for the lives of Malibu needs to be our focus, and I truly hope it's yours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, this is an empty chair. It represents my daughter Emily, who was killed 15 years ago. It represents the four Pepperdine students. And if we fail tonight, it represents every victim we could have saved. You read my articles, the proposal I've submitted. I think you know what's at stake. In 10 days, this $55 million disappears forever, not delayed, not postponed, gone. Let's be honest, Caltrans has done a terrible job explaining this project. They have presented basic painted bike lanes when protected lanes are possible. They failed to clearly address community concerns about lighting, sidewalks, and rural character. They created confusion when they should have provided clarity. The solutions exist: protected bike lanes, limited lighting, rural character preservation. It's all achievable within this project. Caltrans just failed to present the options properly. This is precisely why we need to approve this project with conditions, forcing them to do better. Because here's the brutal choice: approve an imperfect project that we can improve or reject it and guarantee that more families will face empty chairs like this one. The funding pays for both rebuilding and safety improvement. Reject this project, and we get neither. The road stays exactly as deadly as it is today. Caltrans wants to avoid public embarrassment. They'll work with us if we clearly outline our expectations. I've lived with this empty chair for 15 years, every holiday, every birthday, every family dinner. Perfect, perfect is the enemy of life-saving for too long. Approve this project, force Caltrans to do better. Let's work together to make it better. Because in 10 days, when the funding vanishes, you, each of you, will have to look at the next grieving family in the eye and explain why you chose bureaucratic perfection over child's life. The blood will be on your hands and Caltrans' hands. You will be the reason there's another empty chair at another family's table. I've lived with this empty chair for 15 years. I'm begging you not to create more. As is often said in the film business, negotiation starts after the contract is signed. Don't create more empty chairs. Vote yes with conditions. Let's make this the first step in finally making PCH safe. In my 15 years of fighting for a safer PCH, this is the first time real funds have been allocated to road safety.
Thank you for your commitment. Afterwards, we'll do Brooke Doherty, and then Joe Drummond, David Cranston.
Go start? Yeah, go ahead. I'm David Ralston. My daughter, Neve Ralston, was killed on October 17th, 2023, on Pacific Coast Highway, along with her sorority sisters Peyton Stewart, Asha Weir, and Deslon Williams. I watched a substantial portion of the previous meeting where the project was discussed, so I have a layman's understanding of the issues. But I can appreciate that there are many complications that would accompany any project to modify PCH. I understand that for the residents of Malibu, it is unrealistic to expect consensus. From my understanding, this is an opportunity for the funding of maintenance work that is needed for the road itself. And for that reason alone, it makes sense to obtain that funding while you can. I trust the analysis that has been done by Michelle Shane, who has made improving the safety of PCH a personal mission of his for 15 years now. I urge you to do the same. Approve this project and improve it as necessary. In regards to the elements that involve Pepperdine, in particular the sidewalk, I believe that Pepperdine wants to ensure that emergency vehicles will continue to be able to facilitate airlifting of critically injured people from their lawn. And they also want to understand how a sidewalk along their property will fit into a larger sidewalk project. They are not against the project on principle, but it needs to make sense. When you consider any projected change to PCH, in my opinion, the first question should be, will this make PCH safer? If the intention of that modification is that it was designed to make it safer, even if that does not seem to be intuitively obvious, then in the interest of safety, the modification should supersede any other point of contention, because change is required. Please do not let perfection be the enemy of good. Approve this project, make it better.
Thank you.
Hi there, good evening. My name is Brooke Doherty, and I'm a junior at Pepperdine University. And tonight, I would like to share a letter we received from a Malibu first responder. For the last several years, I've had the pleasure of serving the city of Malibu. However, I have had the unfortunate duty of responding to dozens of traffic fatalities along PCH, including the one that took the lives of our four Pepperdine students. That night, and many others, continue to haunt me every single day. And I am not alone. Each life that is lost lives in the minds of every firefighter, sheriff, deputy, and EMT forever. They are scars that reshape our lives, our relationships, and our mental health. I sign up for that burden, so none of you have to experience it firsthand, over and over again. I choose to carry that trauma with me because I love this community. But I am tired. I am tired of watching the corner take people off our highway. I am tired of telling friends and families that their loved ones are gone. I am tired of going home, knowing that we failed our community. And I am disheartened that this persisting problem still exists. While each and every incident has its own set of circumstances, one message is clear in my mind: PCH is not safe. In my years of service, I have heard the cries for help to step up and protect our community. And I have heard the promises made by the city and our state to take action. But I have yet to see any meaningful change. Today, you have the opportunity to make good on those promises. It is no secret that once this funding is gone, it will be years before we ever see it again. And as each year passes, more lives will be lost, and we will relive the same tragic story again and again. I understand that this plan may not be perfect, and I understand that some believe additional street lighting would change the rural landscape of Malibu. But for those of you, I wonder, would you feel the same way if you lost your child, your parent, or your best friend? I guarantee that each and every one of us in this room has nearly hit a pedestrian on PCH simply because we couldn't see them. It is no wonder why so many homeless die on our highway. Would you trade that risk for a sidewalk that you may feel is unnecessary? It is easy to find reasons to be dissatisfied with a plan of this magnitude. But things become abundantly clear when you are standing over someone's loved one deceased on PCH. Each of you signed up to represent and protect our community, just as I signed up to serve it. Please make. Please make the decision today to take a major step in making our highway safer. Our residents depend on you, our college students depend on you, and our first responders depend on you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joe? Joe, who's donating time for you? I don't have a card for him.
Jan Ralick? Oh, no, sorry, Beat.
Beat, okay.
Yeah, what am I saying? You got it?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners, for hearing this tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of Malibu Township Council to urge you to approve this item, but with key safety and design conditions requested by the community: reduced and targeted street lighting that complies with Malibu's dark sky ordinance, which they already do comply, so that's good; only at intersections and not in areas such as the proposed lights between Zuma Res and Zuma View Place, and just one right by the entry of Malibu Seafood, and none on the Escha Beach side, and rural appropriate sidewalks limited to areas that truly improve safety, such as near Heather Cliff; and clear direction that any lane narrowing must be paired with future protected bike lanes as part of a complete streets approach or the future PCH feasibility study project. It's important to move this project forward now. As Michelle Shane and others have pointed out, if the city delays, Caltrans may real- allocate the funding to another project outside of Malibu. But moving forward should not mean compromising Malibu's safety standards or rural coastal character. This is our chance to start transforming PCH into what is actually, it actually is, a community corridor, not just a state high-speed state highway. Right now, Caltrans still classifies PCH as a principal arterial highway under the Federal Functional Classification System, a designation meant for high-speed regional travel. But here in Malibu, PCH is a community corridor, not a freight route. It carries residents, beachgoers, cyclists, and families, not trucks and interstate traffic. In fact, Malibu Township Council had prohibit, got the city to prohibit three axle and larger trucks from using PCH within city limits. That alone shows that this road is not functioning as a highway. Yet because of its outdated classification, PCH is still subject to Caltrans' high-speed highway design standards: 12-foot lanes, limited pedestrian crossings, and 50 to 55 mile-per-hour design speeds. Those standards make it harder to add the protections our community needs: protected bike lanes, safe crossings, and narrower, calmer lanes. If we can demonstrate through this project that 10 to 10 and 1/2-foot lanes work safely for Malibu's mix of users, it gives the city a solid foundation to petition Caltrans to reclassify PCH as a minor arterial or urban coastal roadway, essentially a Main Street corridor, or even better, Pacific Coast Boulevard. That classification matters. It would legally justify lowering speed limits, posted speed limits, protected bikeways, and sensitive design standards that emphasize safety over speed, such as safer crossings like at Heather Cliff. And we won't need so many huge warning signs. This would align with Caltrans' own complete streets policies, which encourages reclassification when a state route functions as a community street. It would also make Malibu eligible for Highway Safety Improvement Program and Safe Streets for All funding to build these improvements. We all know why this matters. According to UC Berkeley's Traffic Injury Mapping System, 61 people have been killed on Malibu's stretch of PCH since 2010. More than half of them have been pedestrians and cyclists. That's not a statistic, it's a heartbreak we've lived through as a community. The loss of the four Pepperdine students two years ago, young women standing on the corner of the road doing nothing wrong, broke this city's heart. It reminding, reminded us if, in a painful way, that speed and design decisions here are literally life and death choices. By approving this project with these specific conditions: reduced and shielded lighting, rural environmentally sensitive sidewalks, and commitment to future protected bike lanes that separate people from high-speed traffic, you can both protect Malibu's character and lay the groundwork for long-term safety. Once the narrow lanes are in place, the city can ask Caltrans for a new engineering and traffic study to formally justify lowering the posted speed limit. That's how we begin transforming PCH from a dangerous highway into a safe, livable, and sustainable community corridor, at least a big chunk of it. Let's make sure what happened to those Pepperdine girls and to so many others, including Emily Shane, never happens again. So please approve this project with the community's requested conditions and make this the first step toward reclassifying PCH for what it truly is: the lifeline of Malibu, not the highway that divides it. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Dave Cranston. I'm a longtime resident of the city of Malibu. I'm here to please, urge you to please do not pass up the Caltrans' offer to make PCH safer for everyone. As we know, there have been far too many injuries and deaths on PCH, which may be the most dangerous stretch of roadway in the state, if not the country. This is especially true for pedestrians and cyclists who have been injured and killed at a rate that exceeds that of LA tenfold on a per capita basis. It's incomprehensible how we continue to tolerate that. I am a longtime cyclist who has ridden PCH through Malibu hundreds of times, probably more than anyone here. And I can speak to the safety of the proposed Class II bike lanes based upon my own personal experience as well as common sense. The proposed Class II bike lanes will provide a dramatic improvement to the safety of the thousands of cyclists who ride on PCH every weekend and every week. I understand that a protected lane may even be safer, but they have their own safety issues and problems. But more importantly, it will be years, if ever, before any protected lanes are designed, built, approved, funded, and installed. And they too will be opposed by some in the community. In the meantime, the proposed Class II lanes could save lives and injuries. Don't let what's some possible safer solution in the uncertain future be the enemy of what could save lives today. If we really want protected bike lanes, the Class II lanes are just paint. There's nothing preventing Caltrans and the city from putting in protected lanes in the future. But right now, class lanes will provide a much safer place for cyclists to ride. Now, we now, we either ride on the shoulder or we ride on the traffic lanes. The shoulder is frequently unavailable due to parked cars. And even if not fully occupied by parked cars, it is inherently dangerous to swerve in between the parked cars and back into the traffic lanes. And while riding on the shoulder or close to around cars, motorists who are coming in from the side streets have very difficult times seeing the oncoming cyclist. And shoulders have lots of hazards. There are lots of road debris, lots of potholes, and rocks. And I almost lost my life a few years ago when I hit an unseen hazard, causing me to careen into the lanes just beyond Trancas uncontrollably and see my life pass before my eyes before I was able to recover and get back to safety. Class II bike lanes avoids these risks. And it will also give us additional space to avoid being doored. You all know what doored is? By parked cars without having to enter the traffic lanes. As you can imagine, riding the traffic lanes, if you have to, because they're occupied by the, is even more dangerous.
Thank you very much.
Please approve the Caltrans proposal. If you do, you will save lives.
All right, Ann Jones?
Good evening. Thank you for listening to me. I feel like I'm going to be expressing a, maybe a less popular opinion. I've lived on Point Doom for 36 years, and in that time, I've never felt driving back and forth from my house into town into Malibu at 10 o'clock at night, at 4 o'clock in the morning. I've never felt that I couldn't see because of lack of streetlights. And so I guess my first ask is that they not be installed. I see that many, like, there were 42 that were proposed. Now there are 27 new light poles proposed. Those all seem to be very close to where I live, on Zuma Res Drive. It's going to damage the night sky for us. It's going to make our life different. I understand safety, but I did want to express this opinion. I don't think I'm the only one who feels this way. That's my first ask, and I'm going to make this short. My second ask is that for the existing streetlights that Caltrans already has here, that they be down shaded all around to comply with dark skies, and they also be relamped to comply with dark skies Kelvin ratings. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right, Jan Ralick?
And I'm here to oppose the installation of the numerous streetlights in western Malibu. Western Malibu is one of the few places left in Los Angeles County where you can still see the stars and experience true darkness at night. That would bring light pollution, harm wildlife, and erase the rural natural feeling that defines our community. Please protect the character of western Malibu and keep our skies dark. That darkness is a part what makes Malibu beautiful and different. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nicole Taylor?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Nicole Taylor, and I'm Pepperdine University's Senior Vice President and Chief Operating Officer. I also serve as the Vice Chair for the Emergency Operations Community for the university. Thank you for your work tonight to enhance PCH safety. Pepperdine fully supports this commitment and appreciates the broader project before you and the ongoing coordination among Caltrans, the city, and our public safety partners. To be clear, we do not want to jeopardize the larger project or its funding and are proposing alternative ways to address our concerns without disturbing a path for approval of the larger project. As you saw in the letter we shared last week, our concern is narrow and specific. The proposed new sidewalk on the northbound side of PCH in front of Alumni Park between Malibu Canyon Road and John Tyler Drive with no connected sidewalk to the east or west. Despite several months of meetings with Caltrans, we unfortunately have not seen information showing the need for this isolated segment, how it will enhance safety, or how it proposes to mitigate the risks it may create for pedestrian safety or emergency response efforts. The sidewalk would not connect to existing or proposed sidewalks to the east or west along PCH. And based on feedback from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, we are further concerned it could induce more people to walk onto PCH, which would reduce rather than improve safety. When a pedestrian goes onto this sidewalk, they will be left with no alternatives when it ends, except to go onto Pepperdine, continue their progress along PCH on an unprotected shoulder, or cross PCH. The sidewalk may introduce pedestrians onto a stretch of PCH they have not otherwise considered walking on. Alumni Park is also an emergency operations hub for our campus community and the broader region. It is a staging and access area for wildfire response. It supports medical and fire suppression helicopter operations, and it provides first responder access to our campus. Any new infrastructure that has the potential to restrict access or concentrate pedestrians in the area risks interfering with those functions. We have repeatedly asked Caltrans for analysis, showing this will not happen, but we have not received it. Our request to Caltrans is simple: move ahead with the overall project now, but remove this one sidewalk element from the scope so we can all come back together with an appropriately designed continuous sidewalk and the associated safety analysis to support it. If Caltrans does not do this, we respectfully ask the commission to condition the sidewalk to address our following safety concerns: connectivity, phasing construction of the sidewalk segments in front of campus to a point where there is a plan to build continuous operational sidewalks to logistical endpoints, and before the installation, ensuring emergency services can continue unimpeded.
Can you please stay at the meeting in case we have further questions from you?
Yes, glad to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Una Khan?
Thank you. My name is Una Khan. I'm one of the board members at Malibu Country Estates Homeowners Association. But I didn't get permission from all of them to talk, so I think I'm just going to have to speak as a resident. I have spoken to several of my fellow homeowners in Malibu Country Estates, and when I spoke to them about this sidewalk, they just shook their head, and they said, "We would never use it." Most of you know that Malibu Country Estates has 107 homes. We have very wide streets. We have very roomy sidewalks. And we use the area to walk our dogs and meet our neighbors, et cetera. I don't think I've ever seen anybody walk along the Pepperdine Lawn who is a homeowner. When we go to Bluffs Park, somebody said that it was to allow us to have access to Bluffs Park. Most of us use our cars to get to Bluffs Park, for example, when there was voting in 2020. And it's never been an issue in terms of parking, et cetera. So I don't think any of, well, very few of the homeowners in Malibu Country Estates would support a sidewalk along Pepperdine. The other thing, as far as connectivity is concerned, I actually called it the sidewalk to nowhere because I thought, what a silly thing to do, that you'd have just a sidewalk starting at John Tyler and ending at Malibu Canyon. So I think that there's a lot of things that you do need to do to make PCH safer, and this is not one of them. So I would respectfully request that you not put taxpayer money into this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Bridget Thompson?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Bridget Thompson. I'm a Pepperdine University alum and a dedicated advocate for safety on PCH. Two years ago, my four best friends, Neve Ralston, Peyton Stewart, Asha Weir, and Deslon Williams, were killed on Pacific Coast Highway. They weren't just my friends. They were my roommates. They were my family, my entire world. Losing them shattered me in ways I can barely describe. There are days I still catch myself reaching for my phone to text them or imagining what it would be like if they were still here, laughing in our kitchen, planning our futures, just living. Every time I drive past the spot where they died, it takes my breath away. I feel it in my chest, the silence, the absence, the memory of who they were and everything they were supposed to become. Pacific Coast Highway isn't just another line on a map. It's a scar, a place that reminds me every single day how quickly everything can be taken and how fragile safety really is on Pacific Coast Highway. That's why tonight matters so much. This isn't just a planning item or another project's. It's a $55 million chance to save lives. If we delay or say no, that money disappears, and the road will still be rebuilt, but without the lighting, the sidewalks, the crossings, the thing that, the things that actually make it safer. That means spending $55 million to rebuild the same deadly road that killed my best friends. 80% of this project is already repaving. The road will be open, torn apart, and ready. Adding safety now costs almost nothing extra, but waiting could cost everything. Now, some, I know some people really worry this will change the look of Malibu, but safety and beauty can coexist. Caltrans has already met dark sky standards. The sidewalks will still reflect our community's rural feel. We could protect the landscape and the people who live here. I've stood beside grieving families, the grieving families of my four best friends. I've watched the flowers wilt at their memorials. I've carried their absence through every day since that night. And I don't want anyone else to ever feel what that pain feels like. There is no Plan B, no next year, no second chance. If we turn this down, the money goes somewhere else, and nothing changes. Please don't let this chance slip away. Do it for Neve, do it for Peyton, do it for Asha, and do it for Deslon. Do it for their families. Do it so no one else has to live with this kind of pain. You have the power to save lives tonight. Please use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, everyone? If we could please refrain from applause. If you'd like to acknowledge something, just raise your hands. We don't want to intimidate anyone from being able to speak freely. Thank you. Damian Keith?
Hello. My name is Damian Kevitt. I am also a survivor of traffic violence. In February of 2013, I was hit, pinned underneath a car, dragged nearly a quarter of a mile from the streets, onto and down the 5-Freight Highway. onto and down the five freeway freeway speeds. My right leg was ripped off, about 20 pounds of flesh in two minutes, 20 broken bones, you name it. So I speak on this subject kind of passionately. I'm also the Executive Director of Streets Are For Everyone, known as SAFE. Since about two to three days after the four Pepperdine girls were hit and killed, SAFE has been working with the Malibu community members, with Fix PCH, with Senator Allen, the California Office of Traffic Safety, Caltrans, the City of Malibu Supervisor Horvath's Office, and the LA County Sheriff's Department to increase enforcement, to get legislation passed, and we're very proud of the three bills we did get passed, and reengineer PCH to make it safer. Since the 20 October meeting, as of 6:00 PM tonight, SAFE has been personally copied on 322 emails, including 82 from Pepperdine students who have all been sent to your email address, and 100% of them expressed support of this plan. The community has spoken. They want this to move forward. Now, we all know that PCH is a dangerous stretch of road, and I understand wanting to address concerns. The treatments that are here are on as part of this plan, are usual treatments. They are proven to save lives. These are not experimental treatments. They will make PCH safer, including correctly implementing dark sky, compliant lighting, and admittedly, SAFE would like to see more aggressive treatments, including things like Class 4 bike lanes. But we realize that right now, there is a balance between safety and time and money available to get this done. I think we can all agree, this is not a perfect plan. But it is the first time that Malibu has had an opportunity to really redesign PCH for safety and for the difference of everyone who uses it, not just those who drive PCH, but the cyclists as well. Please, let's stop this cycle of serious injuries and deaths. Let's move this project forward. Let's continue to work with Caltrans to build a better PCH through Malibu. Please support this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public speakers? I know, I'm on.
There is one raised hand. Ann?
That's it? Wow. Okay. Ann, you there?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm sorry. I'm watching it online, but I got to get to a quiet place. Sorry. Just reporting to folk and watching it online on Zoom with the live time code and comment. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ann. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and...
Two more raised hands just showed up.
Okay.
Here, one of the people that has just raised a hand was previously with a raised hand in this Zoom meeting and disappeared off, and I think that was accidental.
That's fine.
Celeste?
Go ahead, Celeste. You there?
I'm here. Yes.
Thank you.
Um, is it my turn?
Do you speak?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. My name is Celeste Rivera. I am a mother who recently lost my son, my only son, January 26th of this year. He was part of the fire recovery efforts for the Palisades fires on help restoring them, and also helped with the Woolsey Fire, Thomas Fire, and a very good young work ethic and reputation in the city of Malibu. And unfortunately, my son, after an enormous amount of effort and hours on the drive home on the PCH near Sycamore Canyon Cove, right before there's a narrow turn, he collided into that. It was dark. It was raining. There was no lighting, no protective crash cans, no barrier walls, and my son, work truck engulfed in flames and trapped and killed my son. My stand was not only for my family, who is just very slim, my daughter and my grandson, and we ask that you please consider and make the PCH safe. Had those, maybe the signage, the lighting, signals, protective crash cans, a barrier would have been placed, my son's life would have been prevented, and he would have made it home. So I hope you consider to please, please, please help make this PCH. Right now is one of the most difficult losses that I've ever felt in my life, losing a child. And it's not easy. He just turned 27 on October 30th, and he was only 26 when he died this year. So thank you, and please consider moving forward and making it safe.
Thank you very much.
One more hand that came out right after. Do we want to?
Yes, let's go ahead.
It's going to be Carlos? You didn't, Carlos?
Okay, here we go. Yes, thank you. Chair and Commissioner, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a Pepperdine University alumni, also a member of Canejo Valley Cyclists, and we lost one of our cyclists in February of this year up by Sycamore Cove, John McLaughlin. Pacific Coast Highway, let's be honest, is no longer rural. Every day, tens, thousands of vehicles are there, not just on the weekends, but it is a commuter thoroughfare to the South Bay. The $55 million from Caltrans is not about urbanizing Malibu. As some of the folks have stated, and I can appreciate your concern on the lifestyle, it's about modernizing safety. Too many people have been lost, and leadership, I think, at this point in time with this opportunity, will be facing their reality and acting to prevent the next tragedy, and the next, and the next. Caltrans own studies show that lighting and sidewalks alone don't stop crashes, but smarter design, speed control, and better crossings do, especially higher visibility for us cyclists. I myself have been grazed by a motorist's mirror, right by Leo Carrillo. These improvements can save lives without changing Malibu's character, and I urge you to please grant the CDP and lead the city forward, protecting the community, families, and our future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do you want to come on up? I'm sorry, we had two cards for you, and I wasn't sure if you had been sharing time with someone or what was going on, so I'm just...
Commissioners, I'm Tiffany Murray, and I'm here tonight to speak to you and specifically to Caltrans to oppose adding any more streetlights. Caltrans, you've heard this from the community before at the Public Works Commission, and I'm here to ask, what steps have you taken since then to truly integrate the concerns we already raised? Because your proposal needs to reflect Malibu's reality and values. Malibu is not a suburban corridor. We are a rustic coastal community that has chosen to live close to nature, to the ocean, mountains, and dark skies. We've traded convenience for a meaningful connection to this land and to the wildlife that shares it with us. Lighting up our coastline like an amusement park does not make it safer. It erases what makes this place sacred. The truth is simple. The real cause of crashes here is not darkness. It's speed and lack of separation. We've seen the proof ourselves since the Palisades fires. Eastern Malibu has had no major crashes or fatalities because the lanes were reduced and the speed limit lowered. Light doesn't slow cars. Design does. Urbanizing our coastline with excessive lighting will only violate Malibu's dark sky ordinance and harm our environmentally sensitive habitats, the beaches, creeks, the wildlife corridors that makes this place alive. And on the topic of bike safety, paint is not protection. Caltrans' plan for painted Class 2 bike lanes beside 50 to 60 mile per hour traffic is unsafe and outdated. Federal guidance and your own director's policy 37 are clear. High-speed corridors demand physically protected lanes. Protected lanes reduce crashes by more than 40% and can be funded by generous federal programs. So I'm again challenging you to use this project as an opportunity to show leadership, to design a plan that truly reflects Malibu, its people, its wildlife, and wild beauty. Because Malibu doesn't need more light. It needs more listening, and it needs a Caltrans that protects what makes this coastline one of the last truly magical places left in California. Thank you.
I have a question. Are you, do you serve as a Commissioner for the city of Malibu?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
But I'm speaking as an individual.
Okay. In the future, if you could please just say, "I'm here as a private citizen," because you're making it sound like you're expressing a consensus opinion from your commission.
Okay, I apologize for that.
Yeah, and it's really confusing and almost misleading.
Understood.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, is that it?
That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing. Bring it up to the dius. John, would you like to go?
Did we want to have rebuttal?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, applicant, would you like to make a rebuttal statement? Okay. Okay, the public hearing is still open. I'm so sorry.
Just want to, I'd like to address the sidewalk at Pepperdine that I hear tonight that there've been talk, that is not connected to anywhere. Just want to emphasize again, this is an interim project when it comes to bike lane and sidewalk. And the sidewalk proposed at Pepperdine, we have looked on the south side to see we could fit it in there, so we don't have to put one on the north side. But we have some cultural sensitive area on the south side of the highway, so we can put a sidewalk there. But the sidewalk is needed in this stretch, like we explained before. The Bluff Park, and then you have bus stop, it's not just serving the community or the university or the estate. It's serving the whole public that come to this area. So there are people taking buses, may come to this area and need to go to that Bluff Park also. And we are also have to be committed, comply with SB, Senate Bill 960. That mean we have to implement sidewalk bike lane for motor model that also address users such as wheelchair and not just pedestrian walking. So having a sidewalk will basically comply with that, provide the alternative for the wheelchair that need to use. Without the sidewalk, the wheelchair would not be able to get across to the Bluff Park and other. So I just want to point out that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lee, do you want to say something? You have seven minutes to correct the record.
We'll hold it in case we need to do more.
We're closing the hearing. This is your shot. We'll, we could ask questions, but this is your last chance to basically...
Nancy's covered it well.
Okay.
We've done our best with a short timeframe since the girls were killed. This is an opportunity. We heard the community's cries back then. Our team worked really hard. The road safety audit included LA County Sheriff. Our first one, November of 2023, Captain C2 was there. Another sergeant was there. We went through a short area. We came back in January. We did the segment. LA County Sheriff was a participant in that. They were an advocate for items. So I'm going to ask you, with what you're hearing here, not everything is correct. We had LA Sheriff integrated with our road safety audit.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing and bring it up to the dius. Before we start, I would like to make a comment, though, and then I'll go to you, John. Over the last couple of years, I've been watching our city council meetings. The last, there was only one item that the last election was held on, and that was public safety. After the incident with Pepperdine, there were emergency declarations was tried to be called by the city of Malibu to force the change of the highway speed. This is a serious matter, and I, you know, I think that we really, really need to look at the big picture in regards to this.
I just, I just want to make a quick comment, and that is, we've got, I think, I think by the bike person said 150, 200 emails saying, "Just approve it." Okay? And we also have had hearings with public safety where apparently they had a lot of problems. Now, we have a lot of documentation from Michael Shane and from Malibu Township Council that points out, for example, 40 to 55% more deaths if you don't have protected bike lanes. Those are deaths, okay? And the fact that we don't have, we have a lot of concerns about protecting bikes and parking, et cetera. So this is, this is more complicated than just say yes, you get $50 million. Michael Shane pointed out that we can have 80% funding for protected bike lanes for free from the federal government. He also pointed out that not having that can cost $15 million per wreck, okay, to the city. So we have, we're going to discuss this tonight, but it's, it's not political. It's safety we're after. And there are certain things. I've, I've lived here 54 years. I figured out today. I've driven the highway at least 20,000 times. Okay? So we're more familiar with what happens at night, where parking is, et cetera. Why, why light shouldn't be here and shouldn't be there. Then possibly, you know, we have experts from Caltrans, but they don't drive the highway 20,000 times. They aren't locals. They don't understand lighting in rural areas. For example, this, this is a highway legally, but can you imagine that the highway to Las Vegas is, what, 200 miles? Can you imagine 20,000 lights? Do you think that would make it safer? Or 40,000 lights, whatever it would take. So we have to look at that tonight and make some adjustments, as Michael Shane said, and several other speakers. There are adjustments that need to be made. So I hope that we discuss safety more than money and more than politics. And that's what I'm going to try to do tonight, and try to come up with some solutions to make it better and not more dangerous. Because some of the things proposed last meeting, I considered more dangerous. And so I just want to say that to start off the meeting.
I just wanted to start by thanking all of you that come here to spoke and those that came to speak on Zoom. And I want to thank Caltrans for coming back with some updates to the lighting. And that's just kind of it for the beginning.
Marnie?
Yeah, I also wanted to thank everyone that came to speak. You know, some of you really were hard, you know, it was really hard to hear what you had to say, and it made a difference. And the fact that you came here and said that will probably or possibly change the outcome of how things go. So thanks for taking the time to come and share your opinion.
Nicole, I'd like to bring you up and ask you a couple of questions, please. My sure caments, through all my years living here in Malibu, one thing I've seen that's been a constant during the school year at Pepperdine are student, like cross-country groups running around Malibu. And one place I see them run is on the lawn, that they could be using a sidewalk to, for that. And we have a sidewalk on the Malibu Canyon side of your campus. It seems like tying this all together. Is Pepperdine opposed, or they just want more, more consensus? What do you guys really want?
If I might offer just a clarification on that particular piece, in our meeting with Caltrans, they also raised the need for the sidewalk was at least in part based on the fact that our cross-country and track teams were running along that portion. And so we checked with our cross-country and track teams. They actually don't do that. They do run some, and if they are going to, they're going to run on the grass, not on a sidewalk. So that wouldn't be where not on a sidewalk. So that wouldn't be where they would be training. And so I don't think the sidewalk, if the reason for, the stated reason for putting it in is to better support the track and cross-country teams for Pepperdine, they are, they are not in the roadway of PCH. They're running on the, if they are there at all, they would be running on the grass of Alumni Park and they would continue to run on that grass, even if you put the sidewalk there. So I don't think that's a necessary reason for the implementation of the sidewalk. And then are, are you saying, are we opposed to this project?
Are you opposed to, I mean, is there a way to find consensus where you guys feel comfortable in Caltrans? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I just, I just would like to, I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly. So what I heard was that a sidewalk to nowhere right now, just without any clarification or commitment to a Phase B or future project that would make this sidewalk contiguous to other areas of Malibu would make Pepperdine more comfortable with moving forward with this phase right now. But if there wasn't any commitment of a future option, then you would prefer to keep the, the grass area the way that it currently exists.
Yeah, I think what, maybe just to clarify, to make sure that there's no confusion about what we're saying. We're saying either the sidewalk segment could be removed from this project and the project approved without it. Or if the intent was to keep that part of the project in the scope and that was up for consideration, then we would ask for the commission to condition the implementation of that sidewalk to address two issues. One is the one you raised. We have been in meetings with LASD and they had advised that the recommend, their recommendation was for a continuous sidewalk all along PCH, which was connecting major thoroughfares, and they had not recommended just the specific segment between Malibu Canyon and John Tyler Drive. I know that Caltrans has repeatedly indicated that there's a safety audit that disputes that. We have asked for that time and time again and have not received it. And so if there's information out there that we are not being made aware of, it's not for a lack of interest in us trying to get that. And so, so because of that, we are left to have the understanding that the segment of sidewalk with the information that we have now is not, is not in improving safety in that area. It has the potential to reduce safety. And so in that fashion, we're asking for a plan to build continuous operational sidewalks to logical terminating, terminating points that extend to the west of John Tyler Drive and the east of Malibu Canyon Road. And then second, I would just say the other consideration that we have, and I know you all know the, have an understanding about the position that we play in emergency response, not only for our campus, but for the community. I think there, what we're trying to do is get all the right parties to agree that whatever the proposed project is would not compromise the emergency services that we provide. And so at a minimum, I think we would need to understand the number of people that are expected to utilize the sidewalk, how first responder ingress and egress would be facilitated, and then how physical clearances for fire and medical helicopter operations will be maintained. And so I really think that, to summarize our position, we are not trying to stand in the way of the approval of this project. We think that there are, there is an opportunity for the commission to condition the implementation of this particular part of the sidewalk to address those two issues. And we would be willing, of course, to continue discussions with Caltrans.
Okay, wait, one second. Hold on, everyone. Nancy, Lee, would you guys like to, yes, I think we have something to work with here.
So for the two condition that Nicole has asked for, that as we explained earlier, that the sidewalk that we put in and the curb that we put in amenable is not going to hinder the access for the first responder to access into that lawn.
Wait, wait, one second. What about her request? Let's, let's try to.
That was one of the requests, right?
Yeah.
So that request could be comply. The request about the other sidewalk that's south of Malibu Canyon and then north of Malibu Tyler, John Tyler.
No, she said, what'd you say? West of John Tyler?
And east of now.
Okay, you could say east and south depending on how we, it's the same thing. We don't have any funding because that project, that segment will require additional funding and additional driveway from the adjacent property in order to implement that. So we don't have anything programmed at this time. But as we explained earlier, why we believe the segment of this sidewalk is needed.
Well, I think, I think that what she's asking is would Caltrans be comfortable? I'm just asking the question, be comfortable with a condition, not now, because I know there isn't funding, but in the next phase, that it would be required that this would be a committed component?
I don't think it's fair to ask them to agree to that. I don't think they can do that.
So I'm asking, I'm, I'm just, okay. So then would it be fair to say, would there be a problem to remove this portion of the project? And then in the next phase, whenever it may be or not be, and if sidewalks were to be added, that it would then be with a contiguous sidewalk project to bring it come to, you know, a more public.
That, that would be up to the commissioner and the city of Malibu. The way we, Caltrans seen it is that we have money to do this segment of sidewalk right now and we like to do it for the public.
Would, would it be possible, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, I'm just trying to, to take, would it be possible to take this wonderful, we have this funding and maybe use it to provide protection or barriers where possible or where feasible that would not, that would not hinder parking for the bike lanes?
So if anything being removed as a condition, I guess we could comply with that. However, it will be on the city responsibility if there's any request in the future for this segment of the sidewalk to be built, to be funding for that segment of sidewalk. We would not be responsible for that.
Let's, let, let a few other, okay, go ahead.
The, the other part that, you know, just a recollection from having been out there roughly two years ago was that there is sidewalk on two other sides of Alumni Park, Malibu Canyon Road and John Tyler. And part of the thing with LA County Sheriff was connecting those sidewalk areas as well. And there was not a discussion of continuous sidewalks down PCH, down the grade to Cross Creek Road, Webb Way. There was not a discussion further west. The team looked through things. We've heard from your city council several times over all character. We're doing our best to maintain that rural character. The team selected porous colored concrete as a way to integrate things in and provide the access. And so we're, we are open, as we've talked about, to mountable curbs, dykes, while looking at the sidewalk on the other sides of the Alumni Park.
Because I, one, one, one last question. Because you were moving, initially you were talking about doing forty-two light poles. Isn't there a little bit more money left over to expand the project?
There's not. What we do is we fund the items that are specifically called for that are already there. This would be an addition and then we would wind up with environmental clearance issues. That's the challenge we get into. We're at a point right now, when we talked earlier about continuous bike lanes and taking out parking to get that in, that would change the character of the project, create consternation or challenges with coastal and other aspects. I think your attorney may be in a better position to address that than I am. And we have our environmental staff here too, if we need to bring them in.
All right, who's next? Let's go ahead and let Marnie go.
I, I request that you follow this council policy on running a meeting and do it in order of request.
Okay, go ahead, John.
The, the chair runs the meeting, so that's, the chair gets to decide. And if, Chair, if I could make a.
Okay, go ahead, Kellen first.
Right. So the purpose of, this is a continuing meeting, so you can have as many discussions as you want. But staff has made clear that there are some deadlines. So my recommendation is after you get as much discussion as in as you want, we have to either vote this up or down and create conditions. So while last time we had a very robust discussion about the issues and the concerns, tonight, if you were going to try to either approve or deny this, has to be getting us to the yes or the no, as opposed to just continuing the discussions about the issues, which, you know, we've, we've discussed quite robustly and I think are very important. So.
Well, okay, on that note, I think I'd like to do a straw vote between us in regard.
I would like to speak. Thank you.
John?
I have questions.
Commissioner?
And I was.
The chair runs the meeting, so let's, let's let the chair run the meeting and I, I'm sure he will let you speak, but we need to let the chair run the meeting.
I'd like to go ahead and do a straw vote on the reduction of the lights and also all the lights.
I would like to.
The amendment that the staff is recommending.
Are you actually suggesting that twenty minutes into our discussion, we're gonna decide everything?
No. We're taking, we're taking one.
Why are we doing a straw vote on lights? We haven't even discussed them.
We have.
Commissioner, again, the, the chair runs the meeting. He is.
Then all you're doing is, is having all these people come here, make comments, write hundreds of emails, and then say, well, let's just decide. No discussion.
We can have our discussion.
Well, you won't even let me ask a question on the, on the sidewalk.
Go ahead and ask a question, John.
Okay. Can I ask you, what is the PCH master plan and what is the timing on it?
So the PCH master plan has been finalized. The department is now looking at small options that are eligible for programming under our state highway operational protection program. We're working on incremental items there that we can move forward. We're trying, we have to do this in a paced manner and pick things up and look for funding opportunities.
Okay, so we're, we're.
You said a question.
Oh, I only get one. Okay.
You just asked for one, Skylar.
Okay, I want two. I want, I want the same thing you, you let.
When you're, when you're, when you're chair, you can do what you want.
Okay. You want to kill this project is what you want to do. And that's, that's, that's.
Commissioner, we have rules of decorum. Let's not argue back and forth, please.
I was just gonna ask if we can try to finish our conversation on this sidewalk and then move on to the light. That was my comment. So I'm like fifty-fifty on the sidewalk. I don't know if there's a way for us to carve it out or not, because I don't feel like, I'm not confident that, um, I would just like to get the buy-in of a university that has thousands of students and it's going basically right in their front yard.
I agree.
That's, that's what's challenging for me. And I, I feel like there's a way for us to get there and I think that that's what we gotta do. So.
Can I just ask, let's, a really quick question. I just want to ask Nicole specifically. Is your, if your comfort level for the university is that in terms of emergency protection and the safety of the university, and you feel confident in the way that the sidewalk is designed and it meets a rural nature, are you, would the university be comfortable under, under, you know, a bigger picture idea that this is actually a good, a possibly good thing moving towards the future here?
That be on the show though.
No, not at all.
Marnie's folks.
Just a couple of things I would say there. Again, we're not opposed to the project.
Okay.
And what we're saying though, and rural, the rural aspect of it is not something that we're raising.
Okay.
What we're trying to ask to be addressed are two safety concerns. One, we have not been made aware or had information presented to us that a discontinuous portion of sidewalk does not present the risks and actually increase pedestrian safety, or excuse me, decrease pedestrian safety along that portion. And so that's why we're proposing that the sidewalk needs to be extended to a logical terminus so we don't dump people out on PCH. The second question, I would say, is that we would like to be able to have concrete information, not conclusory statements, but information provided to us that the concerns about emergency ingress and egress, the understanding of how many pedestrians will be here and the assurances that we won't be interfering with emergency services. So I think I would agree with you all. We believe there's a path forward. We are glad to continue conversations with Caltrans. And so we propose two conditions in our letter to the commission. And I think we would be very glad if you were to adopt those, to continue our conversations and find a path forward so that according to those safety aims, that we could work with Caltrans to figure out how to do this in appropriate way.
Nicole.
All right. Point of order. Are you gonna run this meeting according to protocol or not?
Commissioner, rules of decorum. If you, you need to let the chair run the meeting, please. Everyone's gonna get time to talk. We're gonna be here as long as we need to.
I doubt it.
I mean, I think we will. I'm, I will stay as long as we need to. But the chair runs the meeting. We have rules of decorum. Let him do his job, please.
So what I'm hearing from you got from the university and, and is that there's some concerns over the ingress and egress with the safety and those things and how that sidewalk is designed? Is that?
Yes, that's part of it, along with an understanding about when we place pedestrians in that area. Will that impede the emergency access to the helipad and other emergency services areas in my park?
I sort of see that too as one, there's nothing that prevents pedestrians from being there right now. The only thing right now is that if they're there, they're in a more unsafe manner than they would be if there was a sidewalk there. And we can.
Sure.
There's, there's two different sides to that, right? But I would see if there's a possibility of a path forward whereby we condition this to say that in regards to the sidewalk, we just need the university and their emergency staff to coordinate that along with, I would say, LA County Fire.
Right.
And the sheriff.
Exactly.
To meet with Caltrans before any concrete's poured and you figure out a plan.
And that's.
To build that sidewalk.
Yes, and that's exactly.
And you're good with that.
But not just that. We have to address the discontinuous sidewalk because, so yes, in, I'm in agreement with that portion that that addresses, if there's a coordinated effort and everyone agrees that we can continue emergency operations in a good manner, then that would address the.
So in understanding that, and then the next step that you're talking about with the continuous sidewalk, I do not see a continuous sidewalk going west or north of John Tyler.
Yeah.
And, and, and if anything, it may at some point, probably not in the near future, go down towards Cross Creek. So I think that Pepperdine has to sort of accept the fact that potentially at some future date with some magical money that California is gonna pull out of some coffers, there may be a sidewalk that gets it down to Cross Creek. The hardest thing about any of this is we live in a place that, for the most part, doesn't favor sidewalks. And sidewalks have been a very contentious thing for a lot of neighborhoods, aside from the Country View Estates neighborhood, which is kind of ironic in all of this. They do have sidewalks, right? Where I live and a handful of the other commissioners live, or some of them live in areas with sidewalks. Some of us live in areas without sidewalks. So I just, I, I think we're all trying to balance all those things. But I, I see a way forward with you guys working together on the emergency stuff. I think that can be done relatively simply.
Agreed.
And we can move this forward.
Yeah, I, I'm in agreement with that. I think the discontinuous sidewalk, for us, it becomes a question of responsibility as well. If the intention of putting something in creates a new safety risk that otherwise doesn't exist, it's difficult for us to say, simply because there's not a plan for a sidewalk means we should just accept this one. It seems like in that case, if there is never a plan, then if someone is able to address the questions we have about the potential pedestrian risks that are created by the discontinuous sidewalk, we're of course open to those conversations, but they don't work.
As a commissioner, I very much understand the concerns, but I think about when we look about this in a, in a larger picture, understanding the funding restraints and the other things with Caltrans, that I would just like to see Pepperdine accept, okay, this is gonna happen. We're gonna get this done in a way that's the best way for our emergency services and other things. I think the last thing any of us would want to see is Pepperdine with a big fence in front of it.
Oh, no, that's not what we're.
No, no, I know. I'm just saying that, that's, sometimes, you know, like if all of a sudden there was a bunch of problems, that, something like that could happen. I'm not saying that's gonna happen or anything.
Of course.
I'm just saying that I think there's a way for this to move forward. That's it.
May I respond? May I respond to that?
No, we're, we're here to ask, to ask questions. I'm so sorry.
Of course.
Thank you. Tyler?
Yeah, so, um, thank you, Jared. From what I'm hearing, there's essentially three options to take a straw vote on for the sidewalk issue.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, one is the complete removal of the sidewalk in front of Pepperdine. So approve the project and other components without this portion of the sidewalk between John Tyler, Malibu Canyon Road. That's option one. Option two is. Option two is that the proposed, the proposed sidewalk is only approved if it meets the requests of the Pepperdine University ask. And then option three is approve the project as proposed by Caltrans. I just wanted to be clear that those are the three o- options we're considering.
Except, except that the, the portion.
Will you get to speak in order? That you faded?
No, I just, I just want to say, but the, when, the one.
Interrupt anytime we want to.
I just wanted to clarify.
Please?
I just wanted to clarify, Tyler, that I think that the ask is that there would be a safety coordination between Pepperdine and Caltrans, but in terms of a commitment to any kind of future connectivity sidewalk, that's not on the table. So I just want to make sure. That is not what we are proposing, if that's the question you're asking me. I was.
I was gonna say that.
Go ahead, Marnie.
So what I'm hearing though, Nicole, is, is that you guys are not opposed to this project at all. You're opposed to that segment of the sidewalk. And according to Caltrans, they don't have the funding right now to make it contiguous. That's not part of it. And so it seems like the best solution to move forward would just be to make a motion to remove that segment of sidewalk for now, with the intention of putting it back in when we're all ready to make it contiguous. Is that accurate?
No, it'll never come. It may never come. It may not come, but for right now to approve this project where at least Pepperdine, who's
responsible for all of those students, and I don't think they would be suggesting this be removed if they thought it would endanger any of their students. So I would say, remove this for now. And one day we can hope for it to be even safer, but so we can approve this a project and keep Pepperdine happy.
John, then Tyler.
Okay, um, several questions. First, and this is to the Caltrans. If you have a PCH master plan that is almost finished, are we gonna come into the same situation where you're gonna say, well, you got 10 days to approve it? Or is something like this going to be considered?
So the projects will progress through the project development process. This project, when the girls were killed, this capital preventive maintenance project was underway. We were tasked to, just, please let me finish. Sir, you asked a question and I want to explain a little more context. I think it will help. The girls were killed. We came through with road safety audits. We integrated the sheriff in with us for that. Asked of the community, asked from council when we were here for the PCH task force meeting. We took action to move forward. This project was in progress. We've extended funding deadlines. We've identified items to go in. As far as the master plan, it is a planning document. We will have to go through the other parts. Each project development process, there's phases within it. We can talk with the team about bringing those in as we proceed. Now, I'm gonna tell you, I have a concern from being tasked with safety. We performed the road safety audit. I hear the.
Sir, sir, I, I. We, I, we're only asking questions here.
Okay.
Commissioner.
My question.
He needs to have rules of decorum for the people you're speaking to. So.
Question.
I understand, I understand, but we.
Give speeches.
I understand. We cannot interrupt people regardless of where they sit or stand. That includes me, that includes other commissioners.
Saying that, that you can't say, I want my.
You cannot interrupt people. We have rules of decorum. That's all I'm saying.
Right. Listen, I'm gonna take a recess for five minutes. This is ridiculous.
Okay, please don't approach any of the commissioners.
Are you watching this? Hey, this is Ann. Uh, hold on. So they're taking a little bit of a break. We're watching. So you're watching our little live version of things and our commentary. So we're here. Say, Rabbit. I'm glad everything's working. I'm sorry, I'm a little, did not expect this. So here, I plug in my mic. Okay, so, you know, I was doing some live reaction. It's like, uh, you know, oopsie, sorry. It's the audience, uh, take, let's see if I can do this. Let's see, can I actually do reactions on myself? Let's see Studio Light. Ooh, no, I want portrait. Okay, portrait light, center stage. Let me do a little reaction on myself. Let's see, I'm gonna choose a thumbs up. So just so you know, I'm watching the meeting over here. Uh, I wish I could show it to you. I can't. Let's see what happens if we try to share it. Nope, it won't let me do it. I can't show myself. Okay, so we're on a little break and I could go back, uh, or show you the news. But I'm not gonna do that. I'm just gonna, uh, I guess I could entertain you. I could read about the news. So earlier today, we were talking about Prop 50 and that the, uh, election, the last day, tomorrow, November 4th. So you have till the 4th, like at seven, I think 8:00 PM polls close, to, to go in and electronically vote or drop this in in-person. Personally, I, I would kind of try the electronic voting to get familiar with it. It's not hard to do. So that's what I did. And see, I got my little sticker. I got my little sticker somewhere right there. Okay, can't quite see it. So, oh my God, look, I'm on TV. Yeah, I'm watching myself on the big screen. Hmm, how interesting. So, yeah, I gotta stay kind of quiet because, uh, it's the library and we're coming up on 8:35. And I'm still here doing this meeting. It's the, uh, I was doing a little shopping for coffee and stuff. And so I'll see what time it is. Just make sure you guys got it. Okay, it's 8:35 on the third. There you go, 8:35 on the third. See iPhone 8 plus? Okay. So once again, um, Prop 60, make sure you RSVP, no comment, thank you. That would be much appreciated by the folk. And, uh, we could wait to redraw lines in November of 2026 when we elect Ann Comarosk, Governor, California. It's me. So yeah, I appreciate you guys getting out the boat and help How the West Is Won. In other news, so school separation is on the agenda. That was in the news earlier today. We attended that on the 29th. And so it looks promising that that will indeed take place. So I don't know what to tell you. School separation, Malibu gets their own school district, finally. Took a little work. People, you know, they kept the faith. So what I can do right now is return you back to the planning commission meeting and we'll all stand by. There's, what you'll see at the bottom, uh, those seen numbers. And those numbers represent, the top number is, um, Pacific's, the daylight time? No, one of those two. You gotta get rid of daylight savings time. This is absurd. We upset all kinds of clocks. And yeah, there's one back there, right there. All those clocks, they're both radio. Yeah, so things like that. Gee whiz, I lost my train of thought. I'm sorry, I'm watching myself on the TV. It's kind of like weird to watch yourself on TV. So I'm gonna return you back. So the numbers is a date and time. So that's a time, Pacific, burned into the window. At the same time, the date right below it. So we got rid of the frames. So only counts like the seconds. So I wasn't prepared for this. Uh, I'm kind of making it, making it up as I go along. And, um, some technical stuff. You can see some of the equipment we're using over here. Come on, over there. And, uh, don't really need a mic. It's just something to hold on to. Sorry, sorry, getting silly. I've been up since 5:00. So I'm a little, a little silly here. So don't forget tomorrow, uh, last day to vote, um, for the election. No on Prop 50. It's best. You'll be on the right side of history. There you have it. Could you imagine 100 years from now, there'll be reading about this day or tomorrow and that crazy election to redraw lines? So what side of history do you want to be on? I'd say on the side that said, no. Thank you. Prop 50. Okay, I'll return you to the weight screen, uh, for the planning commission. Chances are, we are not gonna edit this. So if you're watching, if there's any, if there's not any technical issues, we're just gonna let it go. But there's a possibility we'll cut it. The way you'll know if this is like a edited piece, is it'll be graphics. On the corner, it'll be howthewestwasone.org and down here might be a name or something. So, or maybe even more numbers, but I'm not sure. Like I said, we're kind of making it up as we go along today. Didn't really think about the break. So, but the live reactions, let's see how these work. Let's see. Not every day I do this. But you know what they tell me? That in order to, uh, move on in life, you sometimes have to learn to love yourself. It's not true. I don't love myself that much. I'm more.
They need to take place outside of council chambers. Thank you.
As the city attorney arrives?
Nicole's the one, Chris?
She's up there.
Okay. She's gonna ask some questions.
Okay, well, all right, can I reopen this meeting? Um, John, do you have some questions?
Yeah, uh, I'm the Caltrans person I was speaking to. I'd like to get the question answered. If there's a PCH master plan.
He's not in the room.
Oh, okay.
Maybe I could take the question.
If there's a PCH master plan in, being, being planned right now, why can't items like this be put into that plan instead of this plan?
So item like this, I'll consider in the master plan already. So this is like, anything that we could do under this project, as Lee explained earlier, due to, um, the accident that happened, everybody was involved and they wanted certain items as, to be implemented as soon as we can. And these are the item that does not require
Okay.
much more time or environmental, lengthy environmental documents. So we, any item from that master plan could be implemented. That's why we're proposing this project to implement as early as we can.
The question, um, so if there is a situation where Pepperdine is, is objecting for safety reasons and other reasons, can, can, contingency, et cetera, it can in fact be included in the master plan later. Is that correct?
Yes, some of this could be included, but we do not believe this, that this continuity, it is continued because right now you have sidewalk on Malibu Canyon up to PCH. You have sidewalk from John Tyler up to PCH.
But those are not Caltrans.
They are continued in that way, but I understand Nicole explained that.
That's not my question, uh, about the other, the non-Caltrans sidewalks. The question is, we are, we're doing a CDP here. It has to be specific.
Yeah.
It's not, you can go consult with somebody and design it another way some other time. Okay? So is there a reason why when you do your PCH master plan, you can't consider this project today? That we're discussing now that Pepperdine can have the time to do it the way they would like to have it done and consider the concerns of the Malibu West community that's been expressed here? That's, that's one, that's my main question. Yes or no? Can you do that in a later time? Not, not an explanation about December 1st or anything else. Can you do it in the master plan? Because there's other sidewalks in Malibu, I assume you're gonna want to put in at other times. Okay, Commissioner?
But the intent of this project is to bring those, bring forward those, these items as quickly as we can. That's what the commitment that we made.
That's not my question. My question is.
John, Commissioner?
Well, I, I, I actually have a question for the planning and attorney.
Yeah.
With regards to Mr. Maz's statement about you can only deal with the coastal development plan and the plans there. We can't make modifications later. Um, is that correct? That we can't make any modifications to a project during construction if it has a CDP that required something to go in and be removed later? Does it have to be removed or can there be amendments made to make modifications?
So it depends on the substantiality of the, of the amendments. If, um, if it's removing items from an approval, that can be done at the administrative level. If we are adding significant portions to the project, that may be cause for an amendment to come back to this commission. So, so my suggestion is, as Commissioner Mazza pointed out, is to be very specific about what it is we are approving here tonight, uh, to avoid the back and forth. I don't believe that, um, we can work on some language for the agreeable plan between Pepperdine. Uh, but that's, we have to be very concrete in what the ask is.
No, I got one question.
The, but what? My suggestion to this commission is that there's two concrete options in front of you. One is, if you cannot make the findings for this sidewalk, that, uh, you remove it from the project or approve the project as conditioned, or as conditioned. But, um, unless we nail down specifically what the ask is for the in-between, it, it won't be, it won't, the project is not before us tonight.
Commissioners, if I can ask, add as well, it, just to remind everybody that we stay focused on the project that's before you. It's not about a different project or different improvements or different locations. It's about the project that's before you.
Correct.
Not what can be added to a different project, the project that's before you.
That was not my question. My question was, essentially, there's a disagreement about this. It's fundamental. Can it be done later in a different program, which they have stated they are working on right now? It has nothing to do with our consensus on this particular thing. It's just, what is? It's the difference of saying, it'll never be a sidewalk in the history of the world, or it's gonna be now. Okay? That, that is not changing this project. Now, my, a couple of other questions. And I have been instructed by. I have been instructed by the chairman that I get one question. Okay? That's how fair this hearing is going to be. Now, the question is, is there a three-foot retaining wall that would restrict trucks from driving up that hill? And is that part of this plan? Running along that whole sidewalk?
We, we could modify that.
But right now, the question is, that is what's in the CDP request?
No, the retaining wall is not at this location. That's why we asked for a 13-foot temporary construction easement into the Pepperdine grass area to regrade that, so that we don't have to put a tall retaining wall, other three-foot retaining wall.
You, you're saying you're not, that's not part of this project, a three-foot retaining?
Not at this location.
Okay, and how are you going to get by the approximately 20-foot by 20-foot culvert that's right on the highway there?
You're talking.
With a sidewalk.
Where they, the.
About 50 feet from the corner of, uh, Cannon Road and.
We're talking about Pepperdine right now.
We're talking about Pepperdine.
Right, for, for that area, yes, because the.
I mean, John Tyler, I mean, Malibu Canyon.
Malibu Canyon, I understand.
There's a large. That whole lawn.
That area, we do have a short retaining wall, but the retaining wall is more to hold up the roadway than it's sticking up. So it's a little different scenario in that location.
If that's my only question, I'm going to ask for consensus to remove this from the project.
Before, before we do that, I have a, I have a one more question.
Go ahead.
Okay, so Nicole, this is for you. So I, I really, this is a safety, we're talking about safety, right? That's what this is, it's, it's a, it is a repaving project, but is a PCH safety improvement project. And I just want to make sure that you are comfortable removing the sidewalk that has been presented as a safety condition to help safety and you're comfortable saying you would, you would be fine if we just take it out of the project?
Yes, we would be because the information that has been presented to us doesn't include an understanding of why it's needed or an explanation of how it will create safety. All the information that we have provided to suggest that there might be consequences negatively impacting safety on PCH have not been addressed.
Okay, so then I, go ahead. Marnie, did you want to?
No.
Okay, then I'm, I'm going to ask, do, do we have consensus just to remove, just to remove that portion from the sidewalks proposed in the overall project? And is, and is that okay? Can we do that Caltrans?
So I think where we're going to get into, there's a couple of factors here. Senate Bill 960 requires us where feasible and we have right-of-way to put in complete street features, which the sidewalk would include. And we have the right-of-way, the proposal for the sidewalk is inside our right-of-way in an area that can be regraded. The second part I would like to point out was our team provided information, and I believe it's gone to the city sometime back, that our standards are about providing connection. There's no specific requirement for data. We are providing a connection between a residential area, a park, and you have a sidewalk on John Tyler, you have a sidewalk on Malibu. We are connecting those. The sidewalk on Malibu Canyon runs up, I believe it goes down, approaches the area right down through here and connects through further. So from my standpoint, the controversies on the sidewalk, I have concerns about with the battle we've had here, whether we'll ever, even if the commission puts us off or conditions that whether we'll ever be able to get any other sidewalk built with what I'm seeing here. The other question I have is if it's conditioned, is that allowed if we do not have a funding plan in place for other sidewalks at this point?
Tyler.
Again, we don't have that design in front of us. That is, has to be evaluated for all sorts of impacts. Tonight, we're evaluating this project for impacts to public parking. We're evaluating for scenic resources. We're evaluating for public safety. That project is not in front of us tonight. We cannot decide on that unless we're very concrete with what it is that we're requiring them to do. So unless you say this project is only approved if we have sidewalks from John Tyler through the east side of, of the city of Malibu.
Okay, I have a question for you, Lee. Is the funding in jeopardy if we remove the sidewalk?
I don't know what our next steps will be if you remove it with what we'd have to go through then with the conditions surrounding SB 960. We may have to go through appeals process. And if that delays, then we're into next steps.
Can you clarify what SB 960 is? Because you mentioned.
It's Senate Bill Weiner, Nick, can you come up?
Well, because PCH isn't a street.
Yeah, go ahead.
Commissioners, if I could also touch on a few things real quick, just for clarification. So a couple of things keep getting brought up by Pepperdine and some of the other staff here. The sidewalks are not discontinuous. I keep hearing that brought up. They're talking about east of John, or west of John Tyler and east of Malibu Canyon. However, the sidewalk, the way it's being discussed is confusing people. This will be a continuous sidewalk from John Tyler to Malibu Canyon that allows people to get from both sides from John Tyler over there, which can also access up to Civic Center, which then heads down. Okay, additionally, with the SB 960, this is in Caltrans right-of-way. They have the right to proceed to put the sidewalk in if it's within their right-of-way. They don't need justification for it. So you're gonna, the attorney's gonna touch on that, but that's what that is. They're here making their case to try to get approval for this. They're working with Pepperdine staff with a mountable curb to allow for the safety apparatuses to get up there. So something to keep in mind, this is a safety project.
Question. Question.
First comment and then you, John.
Yeah, I, we have a, we're, we're going around in circles. So there's, there's the project, like Tyler said before us, and as staff said, at a certain point, you just have to decide whether you can make the findings or not. There's, there's the practical considerations and the personal, the moral considerations, but there's the legal considerations, which is what my job is. You have to make findings or not make the findings. And the one that's been discussed tonight and last meeting was safe public safety or lack of public safety as to the specific portion of the sidewalks around Pepperdine. The vast majority of you, and I'm not telling you how to vote, but what I've heard is that you cannot, or you don't think you can make the findings as to this portion of the, the sidewalk. So you have a project presented before you. You can either approve it as is, deny it because you can't make the public safety findings, or you can approve it with conditions, which would be to remove the portion where you don't find public safety as met.
How, but, but Kellen, I disagree with you because what we're doing is we're gathering information through this discussion.
I called John next, I'm sorry. Go ahead, John.
Okay, Kellen, on, on Michael Shane's report, page two, he gives an analysis of how this all violates state law and federal law. Okay, three different points. Now, there, we're being told, oh, you gotta do it because it's the law. Now, Michael Shane's researched this, unprotected bike lanes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And California Director's Policy Number 37 DP-37 establishes complete streets as a default for, for consideration, okay? SB 960 recently enacted mandates consideration of, that's cycling, okay? But this whole thing, for them to say it's a lie, we got to put it in. Don't they have to say everywhere on Coast Highway, if they're making the claim they're making?
They're not saying it's a law.
He said, we have the right to do it and we.
John, John, can I just talk to you first?
My question, please, okay?
Same thing applies, John has the floor here.
His point was, we gotta put it in. It's our deal, okay? Now, that would mean that everywhere in Malibu, for example, at Heather Cliff, where they're only putting in 50 feet.
I, I would not agree with, I don't think that's what they've said, but I also wouldn't agree with that interpretation of, of that. So no, they don't need to, and also a policy is not a law.
Huge leaps.
So if, if you can't make the finding of, of safety on those items, then you either say no to the whole project or you condition it to make the findings where, where you can. So SB 960 doesn't say it goes everywhere and they can put it wherever they want. No, it doesn't.
Are we negotiating with her?
No, I question, staff brings up a very legitimate point in regards to east of Malibu Canyon and west of John Tyler. You know, why, why are you so adamant in regards to that?
Are you meaning why are we concerned that there's no further sidewalk on either?
This sidewalk is connecting basically Malibu Country Estates. It is a continuous sidewalk that's connecting Malibu Country Estates and Pepperdine to Civic Center.
Yeah, I think Pepperdine's already connected to Civic Center. We have other ways through the campus, of course. But I think the, the bigger question is, we have not received information that would demonstrate to us a need for this sidewalk. That's part of it. We specifically asked Caltrans to, for an understanding of the number of pedestrians that are using this area, and we were told that that would never be part of their analysis. And so that seems like it's important to us to be able to make the determination that you're asking, especially because even if it were a very limited number of people that were using that sidewalk, the then balancing act that we have to do is to say if there's a discontinuous sidewalk put in, does that create a worse situation than what we have without a sidewalk there? And so that's the question that we feel responsible to ask. And so that's why we were saying if there's a connected sidewalk for people to go beyond those, those areas, then that, that would change the discussion, we believe. I would also just make the point that SB 960, that's, we have never heard that that would be part of this. So I just want to, maybe, this might help you though. I think, I just want to say, I think if you're being pushed to the sidewalk because of SB 960, the language there says that the elements, project elements should be put in to the extent feasible and appropriate. And so that goes directly to the question that we're asking about this discontinuous sidewalk. Is it feasible and appropriate?
You know, as staff said, it is not a, it is a continued sidewalk. It is giving a homeowners association with a couple of hundred homes access to Civic Center.
May I speak to that? I believe that the Malibu Country Estates, and I won't speak on their behalf, but I understand that they have responded to the city about questions. And I know that Una spoke here, but I, Malibu Country Estates is suggesting that they are not in favor of this sidewalk. And so I might suggest that you lean on their expectation as well.
Hey Commissioner. Go ahead.
Chair, just real quick, the public hearing is closed. Pepperdine is not the applicant here, so I would just strongly urge that we focus on our discussion.
I hope you feel that we've given you a fair. At this hearing.
I would like to make a motion to remove that segment of sidewalk with all the discussion we've had and see how the rest of, how we feel about that.
I would make a secondary motion that we don't remove it and that we keep it in there and have the design be done in a manner in which Caltrans and Pepperdine and LA County come up with approved design for the sidewalk that accommodates for the emergency vehicles.
I would second that.
That is not allowed.
Kellen, how can I?
You cannot design something after you've passed it.
How can I formulate the design of that to incorporate that?
The motion would be allowed. It would be, you're approving it as is with a condition because you can't make the findings otherwise, that the parties that you just named have to work together to put it together. I, I don't know what the concern is, the public safety concern?
I have language.
The concern is, is the ingress and egress of emergency vehicles to that area.
Got it.
With a sidewalk.
So we're not changing the sidewalk. We're not lengthening it in your motion.
No, we're not lengthening it, but you'd be basically changing.
I know, I'm saying, we're not changing it. So it's the same project with the parties that are involved, working together to address concerns regarding ingress and egress. But Tyler has language that I think he.
Can I ask you something? If I came in with a house and my neighbor didn't, my driveway was, could you say, here's a CDP, you guys figure out what the driveway is?
I'm not going to do what ifs, we're talking just about this.
You gotta, you gotta, you know, do things legally because they haven't till December 1st before this.
So Commissioner Mazza, we are, here's some language because it would, it would speak to this proposed sidewalk in the plan set today, right? Is only approved, so the proposed sidewalk on PCH in front of Pepperdine University between Malibu Canyon Road and John Tyler Drive is only approved if Caltrans coordinates with the Los Angeles County Sheriff, Los Angeles County Fire Department and Pepperdine University on an agreeable plan for the design of the sidewalk.
Is that what you're seconding?
That sounds great.
Can I ask you a question? Does anybody ever review that? Or they just say, hey, we decided.
You can add more language if you want, that the, that the action must be submitted to the city.
And then does it come back to us?
We can, we can, we can make that condition.
As well with that man Travis being a part of that conversation right there and getting it done.
So we, we can make it a part that the city staff is sent the agreeable plan or that the, the, the plan comes back to the commission on consent for your, not consideration, but just for your acknowledgement.
I don't want to see it again.
Okay. I'm just giving you. I'm just giving the alternatives to this commission. So that's the language we could use with that suggested change if we want.
Okay, so we have two motions. Do we have a second to Marnie's motion?
We, we. To remove the sidewalk.
Okay, we have two, we have two competing motions in regards to this aspect. We're not voting on this right now except for a straw vote, right?
Correct, and typically we start with a substitute motion.
Correct. Okay, so are you, is your second still stand?
My second, yes, just.
Okay, so that's the set, that one goes first then?
Second motion goes first, which is the one that I proposed.
We're, we only have one CDP, so we're.
We're just doing a straw poll on this, on this decision.
All in favor of Skylar's suggestions?
Aye.
Aye.
Order one?
That would move forward, three to two.
Did you vote no?
I just, I want to, we, I want this to be removed from the.
Okay.
I just have one question.
Marnie, I have a question though. Are you comfortable with removing it if it jeopardizes the entire project? Are you comfortable with that?
But I don't think.
I just, no, 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 he just said, that's not true. He, what, if you take this out and this is money given to.
No, I want the project to, I want this to.
I know, you want.
Also want to not jeopardize the safety of the university that, that has.
Okay, I, I'm gonna, Lee, could you please restate, could you please restate what she said? Because I don't think Marnie heard it. So I'd like you to be really clear so she understands. And if you're comfortable with that.
I don't have to restate anything. I don't need anybody to restate anything. What I'm understanding is that if we remove the sidewalk, you're saying that we're going to lose all 50 million and it's likely that we won't get the safety plan at all. Is that accurate?
No, we're not saying that, but it's not the decision that I can make today.
Is it, is it going to jeopardize the project?
There is a funding opportunity from California Transportation Commission. It is, the amount is designed based on the project that's been presented. So if things change, there is a potential that the funding source changes. They cannot, and I cannot speak to the what ifs of that. So that's where it's at.
Nicole, who, you know, this is a Pepperdine, it's not Pepperdine's land, but it's.
This is not a dialogue, if you have a specific question.
But it can only be a specific question, it's not a debate with Pepperdine.
I might be able to propose a solution that might move forward if, if I understand it correctly. Don't let me put words in your mouth, but I understand the proposal to be to approve this portion of the sidewalk with the condition that the Public Works approval along with public safety, Pepperdine, first responders, ensure that emergency egress and ingress isn't impeded by this project, right? If we could add to that, if Pepperdine, Caltrans, the sheriff and the city can do a study that concurs that the discontinuous sidewalk does not create.
We cannot, no. We, we also can't create a condition of work together. It's, this is an applicant project approved by the.
That's no problem.
By the commission. So we can say that they get advice and input from these different parties or whatever, but we can't have outside parties like Pepperdine signing off on the projects that we're approving.
But we can. Can we, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Elizabeth's question, or really Marnie's was, if we don't do the sidewalk, is the whole thing off? Well, well, the, the big question mark is when we eliminated, when we will eliminate 14 streetlights, is the whole project off?
Commissioner Mazza. I, I answer that question. No one knows for certain. There is a certain amount of funding that is tied to this project as designed. So if we change it, there is a potential that the sum of the funding could be at jeopardy. I personally, and I'm not saying this 100%, don't think all of it would be. However, there is a complicated process they have to go through if there are big changes to this process.
But my question is, is what Tyler said, you can eliminate things, you just can't add.
Those are different than.
One sidewalk, and we're getting told, as far as I'm concerned, which is a falsehood, that, oh, you're jeopardizing the whole project.
Commissioner, this, this will surprise you. I am agreeing with you. That if, I do not think if a little part of this is taken away, that the entire funding will collapse. But I cannot guarantee that because Caltrans has to go to a different agency for funding. So they can't say it tonight. I can't say it tonight. We can't say it here.
I know, but what?
I, I think you are more likely right than wrong, but we can't answer that tonight. So we.
But basically what I want to make Elizabeth aware of is if we change anything, they could say that. Anything. If we said, make the lights purple.
But John, I just want to say they did change things. They changed, they changed, they changed several aspects and they brought it back to us changed. And that's terrific. What I'm not, I want to be clear that when you do these things and when there's a bucket of funding, and, and believe me, funding is not abundant at this time in the government situation. Be aware of that because it's very real. And if you want to take that gamble, then you got to take responsibility for that. And that's the question I was asking, Marnie.
No, no, you're, you're
Can I clarify?
Correct in the fact that, and I didn't ask you a question. You're, you're.
Chair, can I?
No, I, no. They have said, we came in at the last meeting, we said, cut down the streetlights. They proposed that. We haven't said yes yet. Okay. So, so anything, what, what they're trying to say is anything we change that jeopardized the whole project. Well, that's not why we're here.
John.
We're here to make it more safe.
Elizabeth Tyler, thank you, Chair. I just want to make a point of clarification because we're not, this condition that we just think, we just straw voted on is not adding anything. It is, it is approving that portion of the proposed project upon the condition, just like, let's, let's, let's break it down and, you know, we, we do a lot of single family residential here. It's no different than saying the garage is only approved if you get clearance from Department of Fish and Wildlife, or you get clearance from California State Lands Commission. It is, is similar in nature that it is, that portion of the project that they're proposing is only approved if they meet these requirements, which we just laid out. So just want to make that point of clarification. I'm sorry. We're not adding, we're, we're approving as is, as long as they meet that condition.
Okay. I understand that. The question was, is subtracting putting it in, in jeopardy? Not adding, subtracting. And, and that is when, when they say, when they try to tell you that, when have you ever met a government that would, would let you save, would not let you save?
Okay.
Commissioners, I want to recommend that funding is not before us tonight. So we have findings to make or not. So we got to focus on those.
I'm really, I'm, I'm, I feel clear.
I'm not willing to do that. And I'm gonna second the way that we did the motion.
Well, I would like to note, does adding that condition affect the project? Does that affect the likeliness of?
Commissioner, again, we can't really focus on the funding.
Well, my reason is I would say, don't add in any conditions. Leave everything as it is. Leave the lighting as, so that this can get passed.
I, I understand that, but.
If you're saying anything that we add is going to potentially jeopardize the entirety of it, then I would want to know that because I want to know that before we argue everything else.
It's not.
But we have to make findings. The commission has to make findings based on the findings in the resolution, not, and funding sources and jeopardizing it is not one of them. It's public safety and these other, these other items.
Okay. Except to say there's a very specific requirement that, that when you say, I'm going to give you this money and if I give it to you, you're going to need to also make sure that you do these things. And one of them is SB ninety, which has to do with putting in sidewalks where they can. And I think that the motion that Skylar made is cohesive. And I think, I think it's, there's a way to work through it and I hope that that gets done. You can, you, it's your prerogative, Marnie, but you gotta, you know, this isn't just in your backyard. This is city, this is the government.
Who's going to fund this study that Pepperdine will?
No, we're not doing a study. We're not doing a study. That's not part of the condition. The condition.
So Pepperdine doesn't get what they wanted.
No, they're not getting a study.
Skylar, go ahead.
I was just going to ask if we can move on to our discussion onto lighting.
Okay.
No, there's another sidewalk we have to consider.
Is there another sidewalk that you want to consider?
Yes.
The one at Corral Canyon?
Yes.
Or along the beach?
Yeah.
Okay. What is a?
Are you guys going to do a consensus on this first or?
We have, we have a consensus on the first one.
Okay. The Corral Canyon sidewalk drawing they gave us, okay, is using the space between the highway and the ocean. Okay. Anybody who has gone by there, and I went by there four times this weekend, or this week to check it out, does not have enough space before the cliff goes down to the beach, which is approximately 10 to 15 feet lower on the whole length. It does not have enough space to put in a sidewalk with a curb that you have to drive over and park and have enough room to open a door. It does not exist. Okay? Six foot sidewalk, eight foot parking space and three feet away from the, from the highway for biking. It's not there.
I got it.
Okay. And, and you can look at your plans and Skylar brought it up last time.
I, you're correct. I did bring it up last time and I did stop down there and walk around. And it was actually in some areas narrow, like you said, in other areas it's wider. And I was gonna, I don't know if we need more clarification on that from Caltrans. I was comfortable with what they brought this evening. And having gone down there and walked around.
Yep.
I felt okay with what they proposed. I recognize that some areas, the parking area is narrower and, I think that Caltrans very much recognizes the ad advantage and the, more importantly, the safety advantage of having more space on the highway for, for parking and somebody opening up their door. And it seemed like that's what their intention is to accommodate as best, as easily.
Do you realize their drawing goes to the ocean, to the mean high tide line? That's their, what they use to measure? Okay. There is no, no parcel in between that and the ocean. That is their drawing.
I understand that.
Okay.
And I, I, I would invite, I'm drawing a blank on Nancy up right now. If, if we even want to put the drawing up there to clarify, but it seemed fine to me.
I would appreciate it. So we did have survey and we did provide that cross section. We want clarification. We're not putting any bike lane in this stretch because there's parking required here. So what we're putting is the six foot sidewalk and we do have room to put it. There's one small section maybe close to the cliff. When we have that situation, we will put handrail or something up for the pedestrian. But majority, we will have at least five more feet beyond the back of the sidewalk with a flat area.
Can we put this light up?
Can you guys?
Staff are working on it.
Okay, let's see. Yeah, there it is. So after the 11 foot lane, 11 foot lane, you will have one section about 12 foot to about 12 and point two in general. And then the other section where, where is the more stricter, we have only about nine point five to about 14. It vary in width.
I ask a question.
Sure.
What is the area where you're going to have no parking? Is that because it's, because from the way that I saw this, it looks feasible that you have a 12 to 12 point two foot shoulder that, but that's a zone where there's no parking allowed, but then down below where the park, limited parking, we have a nine and a half foot to 14 feet. So it sounds like we should be able to accommodate for parking in the 12 foot area.
Yes.
Unless I'm missing something.
The sign right now said no parking. I think that one is closer to.
That's just a small section where there's no parking, like the lifeguard tower where it's red.
That's correct. That's correct.
Understood.
The rest of it is a limited parking hours.
It's, it's, it's six feet and twelve and, and 10 feet.
Well, no, the six feet is outside of that. The six feet is outside of the nine and a half. They're, they're saying that for the limited parking, they have nine and a half feet to 14 feet. So it's unfortunate that you don't have a wider space, the whole area. But it is what it is.
You're saying that you went down and you look and it's, it's six feet and nine, nine and a half.
Well, you also.
It's 15 feet wide off the highway.
The, the lanes are going to 11 feet there.
Yes, we, we are reducing the lane to get more.
So you're going to name more cases that way too.
Okay. And you, you realize that you have to open your car door to get out of it.
I recognize right now that.
And that'll be on the highway.
On Pacific Coast Highway is a very dangerous thing and you better look in your mirror before you do it.
Yeah. And, and the way people park at Corral Canyon or what I, whatever you call that beach.
Stand blockers.
They pull off the highway and park. Okay. And instead of stopping, dead stop in the, in the number two lane and try to park.
I recognize that. I drive that section of highway. I do not drive in the slow lane. That is correct.
You think this is safe? This makes it, this, the whole thing is about making it safer? And you're forcing people to stop on the highway?
No.
When people are going 50, 50 an hour?
Is we're forcing people that already have to stop on the highway to then park and walk on the opposite side, not walk between their vehicle and PCH.
People on the highway do not stop in the fast lane. They pull off the road and then they park. There's enough room to do that. But they, but they don't stop in the middle of the road.
If you drive along this direction of beach, you will recognize that with cars parked there, with many of those spots, as it is, you have to stop in the slow lane to be able to park. And I think that what Caltrans is doing is trying to make it safer and I don't think we need to stand in the way of that.
Well, I, I just want to, now I question. When they go to build this and there's a cliff and it doesn't fit.
John, if they're, if they have, they've gone through their own plan check and they have their own survey. They're not, they're not designing something that did not.
Their survey does not show the beach.
If there's any cliff, we definitely will put handrail up there for pedestrian in back of the sidewalk. We would not just let.
We don't have, we don't have a drawing that shows where the drop off to the beach is, do we?
We, at this time, we don't see anywhere that it's just drop off completely.
Yeah.
Based on our cross section.
Nancy, I think that one of the, the bigger concerns will be in the future. I understand it's not part of this project. I'm just making a comment is that sea level is rising and variably the bluff underneath where the sidewalk is will erode. And Caltrans will cross that bridge when it gets there to make it safe.
You want to be in the brave stall to make the motion, Skylar?
I'm not going to make.
Well, there's, I think there's motion. Yeah, we have.
Pole.
Right.
I'm okay with Caltrans' design here. I don't see.
Yes, I, and I, I.
Same with me, Marnie?
No.
Okay.
All right.
Next one?
Are we on to lighting?
Lighting. Yeah.
Done.
Can we get the sign stuff out of the way? John, are we good with the signs? The sign stuff's good?
They fixed.
Okay.
Okay. So if we're talking about lighting, do we want to talk about, there's a couple of areas that I think are of concern. The area near Malibu Seafood, then Zoo, Zuma View Place to Zumariz and whatever else you're raising your hand for.
I, I was, I was just going to go to Tyler because I think Tyler had some tweaks to make sure that we better address our dark sky ordinance.
Oh yeah, thank you. For sure. Hold on a little bit. Adam presented it in his presentation. If it's easy to pull.
Also, one question is, can we mandate that the existing lights comply with that also?
Rebecca's going to lead the actual language, but what was the question? I'm sorry, Chair.
If we can mandate that existing lighting that's going to be remaining comply with the new lighting in regards to shielding and, and no, and all that.
I would talk to Caltrans if that's part of their funding. That sounds like a big funding issue. Because it could be a lot of lights.
I think we're in agreement with the language that was proposed from the gentleman that gave the staff report.
Right.
I don't think there's any opposition.
I have a question on that though. When we got the staff report last time, it said everything was going to be dark sky compliant. And then when you looked at the, when you looked at the plans, it wasn't. Okay. It wasn't shielded on one side. And then we get just some of the pages back with changes and they're not the same drawings as the numbered drawings as before. So it's really hard to tell what's going on.
So.
Does the language cover the, are we, we're not approving the prior drawings. Is that correct?
That's correct. And also this is all encompassing. That's why we work closely on this language. This, the project, we can't say for certain. I know that's been used a lot, that these lights are dark sky compliant. I think these lights are fully shielded in 3000 Kelvin, but that's about it. So there's a lot of components of the dark sky ordinance, including the trespass, which I mentioned before, which is really the key component to keep the light directed at the area it's supposed to serve, which in this case is the right of way. So to the maximum extent feasible, here's the language here, but we're asking Caltrans or requiring Caltrans to basically keep their trespass, not only fully shielded, not only 3000 Kelvin, directed downward, but also to keep their trespass within the bounds of the right of way and not have trespass that goes above the limits required for ESHA on the public beaches, on private property. And that will be confirmed with our city consultant who does the final inspections with the light meter and measures these at the property lines.
Okay. That's, I'm good with that one. I, I have. Yeah, I'm fine.
Is this, is this essentially the same thing as gas, the gas station language?
Oh, I, I did, I'm so sorry. I.
Yes, it is. It is.
One other thing. Because this is a highway, this is, they're exempt from dark sky anyways. This is something.
That's correct.
This is something that we're just getting as a throw on.
That is, that is correct. The dark sky ordinance expressly says that.
This is something where Caltrans is saying, I recognize that you as a community have concerns and we are trying to accommodate those as best as possible.
Correct.
Okay. Can I ask a question of, I guess, staff? Is there any study at all or anything that says that a lighted highway causes slower traffic than a dark highway? Yes. I mean, I'm seeing if it's safer. I, I assume I, the opposite, that when I'm driving on a dark highway, I don't drive as fast. So my question is, I'm going after safety. When you light it up like a freeway, you go faster or do you go slower? Is it safer or not safer?
The more light, the more safe the road would be. Now, is it going to lower the speed? No. But is it going to make the roadway more safe? So you, for more visible? Yes.
Yeah, I, I understand it's more visible, but is, is the speed our problem? Is it speed our problem?
I just like, I would, I just want to comment on that. And just because I, have you ever turned out the lights in your house and you try to walk from one area to another? And you're going by braille? What, what I'm trying to say is you don't, it, it's dangerous. It's dangerous when you cannot see.
I know, but you, you have probably 5000 lumens pumping out of front of your car.
I will say this, you would be in cars where you actually have to turn on the headlights.
We still have to, we have a lot more to do.
Okay. Well, let me, I just, I just want to.
You can do whatever.
That's a question of, actually you could, I could ask you a question. Is there any study that says lighting up a road? Because these are 15 miles of basically dark road. Okay? If you lit the whole thing, would people go faster or slower?
People are going to drive the speed they choose to operate the vehicle at. That is what we see. Every motor vehicle driver is different and they are going to make that choice. That is part of the licensing requirement and the responsibility they bear.
My question is, you as a person driving a car when it's dark, would you drive that car as fast as when it was light? Would you drive on a freeway as fast as you drove on BCH with no traffic, with no lights?
So having driven for quite a few years, I've had the experience of driving freeways and finding myself driving over a tire that somebody left in the roadway in an area that was not lit. I have had the experience of working with my colleagues where we have put in safety lighting on facilities such as the 405 freeway that were high speed. And we had fatal crashes there. It was dark. We lit it up to the point you could probably land an airplane on it. It was that well lit. And our fatalities went to zero for that timeframe until the copper wire was stolen.
Okay, thank.
So.
That's good enough.
Well, I, I just want to make it clear, we're picking things to make safety improvements.
I want to just say, from what I'm hearing is we need to approve it as is. And you're going to do the best you can to work with the Malibu Public Works and the everyone to make this something that everybody can swallow. Or at least have. And so I'd like to make a motion to approve it and stop talking about every little piece.
Well.
Second.
I'd like to comment on that. And you're saying, saying that we had 42 lights. And you're saying, saying that we had 42 lights and we said, you know, get rid of the ones that are extraneous. So they come back with 27 and we could have aborted the 42.
But they can't come back with anything. This is it. This is the night. This is when it's.
And we have, we have, for example, as Skylar pointed out, we specifically said on E29, get rid of them. It's dangerous. They specifically put them in. Don't you think we should discuss that?
I think that we have done a really good job of discussing. And I think that we've listened to the public. I think that we have walked through all of the different avenues of this project. I think that we want safety in Malibu. I think that we have experts before us. And I think that we have done, as, it's not going to be perfect, but we've done our best to get this project to where it needs to be. And I am going to second Marnie's motion.
You really think that the people of, between the four houses, between Zumaraz and Zuma View, the four houses need eight street, eight lights? And when, when the neighborhood comes in and says, are you kidding me?
But I think that they'll work with the, if, if enough people come and have a problem, I think that they will work with them.
They're gonna, they're, they can't. They're, we passed the CDP. Those ain't.
I think they'll work with them.
No, they can't work with them.
Yes. But I, I was just gonna add this. I think there's a couple areas we can talk about with the lights and we can get a couple more of them out of there. That's where I'm at with it. And there's really, I think, a couple specific areas. I think Malibu Seafood, I don't see the need for a warranty. I think it's four or five lights. And the area by, between Zuma View Place and Zumaraz, Zumaraz intersection's already lit up and I don't see the reason for, I think it's eight or 11 lights there. I just, I, I can't wrap my head around it. Driving here this evening, I thought about it as well. It was dark out.
But if we take those out, are we not jeopardizing the whole project?
No.
No.
No, you're talking about different things. You're talking about different things. When we're talking about the sidewalk, it's, it's pretty specific. However, if you have 26, 26 additional lights, and, and I hear the dark sky people, I get it. I really do. And now you wanna reduce that, we had 46, now we're 26. Now take out 11 more. Why don't we just take them all out? Why don't we just not add any lights?
We take eight lights, move them over to.
But he just said the lights make it safer.
No, 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 no. You, you guys are.
It's a safety project.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Four houses.
If the lights.
Four houses.
I don't know whose turn it is, but one person has to talk.
And the other thing is, for example, do you ever buy gas at, do you ever buy gas at Heather Cliff?
Yes.
Cause I do all the time.
Okay, do you really think that they need a street light? A new street light right in the middle of the gas station? You really think that? You really think that? It's crazy.
We got your point. Skylar?
Make the motion, Skylar.
You know.
We already have a motion in a second.
I just think that we have to look at those zones on either the drawings up there, the drawings that they gave us and pare it down a little bit. I really do. And I think that Malibu Seafood, I don't see the reason for the lights on the ocean side of it.
But they're saying it makes it safer. They're saying it makes it safer.
You know what? You can go down Pacific Coast Highway and the entire eastern end of Malibu is lit up like daylight and it is not safer. There was more accidents on that side of PCH than there are on the west side.
There is no.
It might be because there's more cars, might be because of a couple different things. But if you lived in one of those houses on Zumaraz that has not had streetlights forever and you can go to your house and look at the stars at night, I understand there's gonna be limited light trespass. Somebody that works as a lighting professional, as an electrical contractor.
Make a motion to take them out.
I'm going to. That's why I'm trying to look at those areas. So I think that we should.
Can we pull that diagram, please?
The new E29. Which is different than the old.
I don't know if they have exact, I think the only diagram that they have is the table that shows the difference.
No, it's right here. The first one here. Turn it over. Or the, the lighting diagram.
We do have it on the PowerPoint. If you could pump it up.
Have a powerpoint.
It's, it's E29 of the new maps. This is, this is. And then, then they didn't label them, so I have to try to figure them.
Is this where you like to see?
That's the first drawing showing the area near Malibu Seafood.
Nancy, go ahead, yeah.
I would propose that we don't do the three lights on the, the ocean side. If you have one light at the bottom of the hill there, that's where the main bend is. I don't see the issue with that.
And the other, the other point is.
Lee, would you please answer Skylar's question?
So the team reviewed the crash patterns out there and this was the area that came back with a recommend, to keep the lighting. Staff, engineering staff also reminded me that Malibu Seafood is open till after dark and the staff leave at different times. We've also had problems with the median out there. People have run over it and wiped out the sign that we put up as a marker because they don't see things. So from our standpoint, we see the lighting as necessary.
The, the reason they put it on the ocean side because on this side, there isn't any room to put those light posts on the Malibu.
Ability to put them on the hillside?
Right, there isn't any room. We try, we stream the driveway and then it was at the landscape area, as you could see right there.
There's, there's more side on, more.
There's a lot.
That red line is correct then. There's more on the, on non-ocean side.
There's a little bit of a slope there, so you might have to do some retaining, but I would.
And there, there's also no crosswalk.
I'm not in favor of the lights on the beach.
Right, right away that we don't have the space to put it.
Okay.
So that's.
So that's, that's the reason.
I'd like to have, I'd like to have, I'd like to have consensus on getting rid of the ocean side lights at, at Crowell Canyon.
All right, I would second that.
Okay, can we get consensus on that?
This is, this is, I hear what you're saying. I personally do not feel comfortable negating a safety study when I am not a safety expert. And I cannot with good conscience tell Cal, tell Caltrans that does this as a profession that they're wrong and I know better. Now, if you wanna do that, I hear you and I, you know, but I, I, I can't in good conscience do that. Sorry.
You're saying that they'd need another light at the gas station.
What I'm saying is that I am not a safety expert and that I do not do this for a living. And I, I hear that this has been studied and looked at and I have to trust the safety experts. But I understand that we wanna protect the dark sky and I think there has been an accommodation and a reduction in lights with a conscientious look at safety. And I, and that's what I have to support.
Well, I'm trying to find a little bit more balance in that.
Well, let me say, they are dark sky compliant. And you don't have to make, they could just say F you, Malibu. We're not even gonna make them dark sky compliant. And they have done that for us.
Say great, we won't give you.
But you also have to realize they're creating a danger. There's no crosswalk. They're putting in lights for a crosswalk without a crosswalk. There's an underpass underneath the highway, so you don't cross there. And the place closes basically at dusk.
There's already a danger.
Why do you say that?
Because it's dark. They just said that much less.
Nobody lives there.
I can take you to a lot of cities in LA that are lit up really, really nice and there's like a lot of danger that happens there.
Okay, guys, so we have what's, I voted every, it's on you, Marnie. What are you gonna do? We have two completing straw poles right now.
What's the straw pole?
Straw pole is, they're proposing to remove, how many?
I'm proposing to, I'm gonna reduce my removal. I'm gonna say I'm gonna reduce two. Keep one on each side and that's it.
Or as, and then we have a, one that is basically saying approved as designed. So those are the two choices.
Yeah, I don't personally think that we need all those lights, but I am gonna put some amount of trust in the experts that work at Caltrans, much as I don't want to.
So let's turn my light on each side.
Going to, because you know what? There's a girl that spoke tonight, I think it's Brooke in the gray sweater. And is that your name?
Brooke or Bridget.
Bridget. Yeah, one of you. But you know, you said, imagine if this was your best friend or your family member. And I did, I imagined and I thought, oh my God, I would be so pissed off if we didn't pass this exactly as it is. If it was my family member and there were things that could possibly make it safer, I would say, yes, I want that. And the fact that they're dark sky compliant, that's, that's great because that's what people want. So we want it safer and dark sky compliant. So I, I would say keep it as is, just because I'm gonna trust the Caltrans. I don't really trust you, but, and I don't trust you to like not make a traffic jam and not make it a horrible experience for Malibu where I'm gonna curse you every day. But, but I am, I'm gonna trust you that, okay, this is safer. Hopefully you'll listen to Malibu Public.
So Marnie, I have a question for you. Do you feel that way about all of the lighting then? Okay, so I'm gonna save the conversation. Okay.
I.
So you're, you're gonna wanna go then to the Zuma View Place.
I go, we had the residents come in. I live on Zuma, Zumaraz. I don't live with.
Straw vote was three to two.
I was gonna say, we have a straw vote, Commissioner Mazza. All due respect, we have a straw vote. I think I just heard Marnie.
Marnie made it. Did you make a motion for everything?
Yeah, so it's three to, right?
Yep.
Okay. I don't know if you've ever driven.
Wait, 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 wait. I think Marnie made a motion to approve the plan as designed.
As designed. I didn't walk, walk in here tonight thinking I was gonna do that. I walked in here thinking I was gonna do something else. So people can make a difference by speaking up.
Yes, you're here to that, Marnie.
Marnie, what would you do in Sarah Retreat? If somebody took your little road and took four houses, no, four houses.
But hey, I'm gonna stop you because I, first of all, that's private information that you're telling everybody. And, and second of all, it's, this is about the whole community.
This is about the whole community, though. We're talking 15.
Everyone stop. Okay.
We're talking 15 miles and you're talking.
Commissioner, the chair, the commissioner.
Light, eight lights, four houses.
John, Marnie, both of you go.
Chair, chair, if I may. I think we do have a motion on the table, if I heard correctly, from Commissioner Cammons to approve the project as is. But maybe Vice Chair had a friendly amendment that I was hearing.
No, yeah, no, there was a condition with respect to the sidewalk in front of Pepperdine.
Okay, so is that, is that accepted, Marnie?
And also your, and also staff recommend, the staff.
With the staff recommendation with the dark sky.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the motion on the table.
Okay, let's get a roll call, please.
What, what's this for?
This, the project. She made a motion for the project. She said to be voted.
Motion, or we do that, we need to.
I don't think it's a great project, but it's for now, it's good enough and they will work with, with Malibu.
They cannot work with Malibu. This is a CDP.
But they've already said that they would.
They cannot do it.
So if it's perfect or.
They can, they can remove aspects of the project.
They can as they go. They, they've done that for other projects. They've made changes as they.
Skylar, or are you, Tyler already clarified that?
So just to be clear on her motion. Her motion is to approve the project as conditioned with the sidewalk the way that we discussed it. And approve on all the lights as conditioned with the dark sky requirement.
And we have the conditions to read into the record before you vote.
Rebecca, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Chair. Let me just scroll back up a minute. So the motion on the table is to adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2569 as amended. One, adding a condition of approval to state, Caltrans shall utilize light fixtures that are dark sky compliant to the maximum extent feasible. The light fixtures shall be fully shielded, 3,000 Kelvin in color temperature, directed downward and must not exceed the light trespass limits onto adjacent properties listed in MMC 17.41.050G unless necessary for adequate ingress egress as reasonably determined by the Community Development Director. City staff shall inspect the installed lights at the cost of Caltrans and confirm compliance with this condition. Amendment two, adding a condition of approval to state the proposed sidewalk on Pacific Coast Highway in front of Pepperdine University between Malibu Canyon Road and John Tyler Drive is approved so long as Caltrans gathers input on this section sidewalk designed from Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, Los Angeles County Fire Department and Pepperdine University. City staff shall ensure that Caltrans has communicated with and received input from these parties prior to any building permit being approved. Amendment three, approving the signed plan sheets updated on November 3rd, 2025. Number four, approving the revised plan sheets E29 to E37 dated October 31st, 2025. And five, determining the project is categorically exempt from California Environmental Quality Act and approving coastal development permit number 25009 for the installation of 19 new guardrails, 22 new or upgraded curb ramps, 6,956 linear feet of new sidewalks, three new retaining walls, two relined intersections. I need a replacement number for the new light poles. What is the final count?
Twenty-seven, I think. It was as proposed.
I, I just don't know the number to insert there. Okay, as proposed, 15 miles of new or upgraded bike lanes, a vehicle pullout for law enforcement use, median reconstruction at various locations and associated roadway improvements along Pacific Coast Highway within the public right of way between Ventura County Line and Sarah Road. Is that your motion?
And one point of clarification on the motion. Our city attorney wanted to add a little bit more language to that second condition about the PCH or the Pepperdine, we'll call it the Pepperdine sidewalk. So the condition would read, the proposed sidewalk on PCH in front of Pepperdine University between Malibu Canyon Road and John Tyler Drive is approved so long as Caltrans gathers input on this section sidewalk design as related to public safety from the LA County Sheriff's Department, LA County Fire Department and Pepperdine University. City staff shall ensure that Caltrans has communicated with and considered any input received from these parties prior to the building, prior to any building permit being approved.
All right, before we vote, I wanna say something. Everyone that came out tonight and wrote letters, I wanna thank you. You guys were all participants in the system. You guys made a difference and there's a lot of things that happen here in Malibu and please keep involved. And?
When you're done.
And Chair, may I call the roll?
No, I.
Yes.
I want everybody who came here and especially the planning commission to read. The Shane letter, which describes the unsafe conditions we are approving tonight. And the Malibu Township Council letter that also shows the unsafe conditions we are approving tonight. Forty to fifty five percent of the people who ride a bike on the highway. Rather than getting protected lanes are going to die. Okay? And that's according to statistics from the federal government. Okay, so just realize that when it happens. Whoever votes yes has some responsibility that they abdicated to. A, a situation that could have been better and could have saved lives.
We listened to our city council and their concerns and we listened to the public and we're here to.
Your responsibility.
Mission.
I would actually say that's not our responsibility. I would say it's Caltrans experts.
We are, we are taking a vote and that's how you're doing. They're not voting, we are.
Michelle Shane is in.
Missioners, the chair has directed that the roll be called on this vote. Commissioner Cammons.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza.
No.
Commissioner Peak.
Yes.
Vice Chair Riddick.
Yes.
Chair Leonard.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
John, the secret to perfection is imperfection.
The secret to safety is to be safe.
You guys want to take? We're gonna take a five minute break. We'll be back at ten fifty five. Minute for the world to catch up.
At the tone, zero hours, forty five minutes, coordinated universal time.
Hello, everyone. So it says forty five, but we came on at forty four, but we dialed in at the wrong time. So this is on Comerask, on Comerask and Comerask with the four forty four, four forty five. For state news. Greetings from Malibu, California. Oh, magic trick. Don't need that. So we'll start out weather. So the weather is sixty degrees here in Malibu. And today there were the, excuse me very much, need a little bit of a drink and a plug, Unisat. I work for them. Great example of being president for a company that you actually don't get paid. You can be president and not get paid. It's a thing. So sixty degrees out in the Malibu, or at least in area. There was a big parade downtown for the Dodgers, which you heard it here first, that they were going to go. Seven games and the Dodgers would win. Ta-da, we predicted it. Now, if we could only predict horse racing and who's going to win the lottery, that'd be grand. So I'm trying to see the network return, which doesn't seem to be working on my iPhone six S. Yeah, that's an iPhone success, see? It's a real one. It still works. But we're having a problem with our feed. So we can't see our return. So technology, one person operation. So, okay? So it was a big parade. Hopefully this went peaceful. And because we have been keeping track, they've been getting everything organized here. So first off, this live version doesn't seem to be working. So if it's recorded, you're going to see graphics. You'll see graphics here. That's how you know it's been edited because we don't have a person to type in titles. There will be a planning commission today at six thirty. Big issue is Caltrans. Lighting along PCH. Crosswalk, sidewalks, these kind of things. So you're expected to tune in via the city of Malibu's website. Or you can watch it perhaps here on this link. Because we're going to do a special broadcast of the city of Malibu Planning Commission meeting with live reaction. So I don't know how it's going to work. First time you've ever done that one. We put the numbers before. Here, I'll show you what the device is. This device is going to generate the numbers to put on the planning commission. Yeah, that's going to be pretty cool. So we're going to turn it around, put some live reactions in there and see how it works. You know, it's, it's the planning commission meeting. They record it. So if you want to see a different take on it, tune in. And we'll put that link here. So I'll turn it around. Other thing too is I should have put more effort into it. But there was a big event. By the way, that's the planning commission agenda. Okay? And if you're watching this on Nextdoor. Or Facebook, there's a link to this. Oh, Nextdoor for sure. Not necessarily positive about Facebook. Facebook's more like national where Nextdoor is Nextdoor, Malibu. So there you go. Okay. The guys are following me today, see? Bobbing and stuff. They want to get, they want to get a, a view of the room. See, the other one was. From Cait Lane account executive for a company called, oh, I'm sorry, you know, I. Ballot Spear? I didn't quite go over this enough, but it was an event that went on over the weekend. And they supplied me with B-roll, all the necessary pictures and text to go with the story, to put a story together. In fact, this could be a project to put together. So they did raise a good amount of money for charity. And we're kind of. Well, I feel bad that we missed it. So if you have a story idea, feel free to email me here at. How the West Was Won at AOL dot com. And I'll put that here. How, it's the first letter, How the West Was Won at AOL dot com. So we'll touch base on that story again. So Kate, sorry if I didn't get to. So it's not the best one to do anyway, because we have. Technical issues. So we'll turn it around and we'll take a look at all the B-roll material and all the texts on it. So I just want to acknowledge I have your email right here. Okay, on, on the desk. The other thing, oh, it's not on the desk now. It's on, it's on the two store part floor. The other thing too is, oopsie, I voted. Yes, you, today. Is the last day, well, yeah, two days, yeah, till, no, tomorrow, the fourth, to vote. To RSVP or vote in person and say, no, comma, thank you. No, that's the preference, you know, that's. You know, we got some people advocating for it and well, you know, got to keep it kind of fair. So some of us say, now. And see, also a plug for me because look. No poly, no politic NPP, no political preference governor. Yeah, California. This is going to ramp up soon. It really is. Because after this election, we're going to get a better feel for how people are voting. You know, if they'll come out and vote, who the significant others are coming out, Democrats, Republicans, that kind of stuff. Oh, see, look at the camera. See, look, encoder overload. That's like too much information. That's giving me a message like too much. Okay, I'll stop it. So tonight, planning commission meeting, six thirty. Catch it on the city of Malibu's website, or you can catch it here. Our special edition, live coverage, our attempt at live coverage. Otherwise, we'll just post a link and you can watch it without the numbers or reaction. So. Actually, it's, it's already posted. So, yeah. It's already, if you go to the comments, you'll see it there.
The last on the list.
The other little item is, we did attend this on the twenty ninth. And it looks promising, like there will be indeed a school separation. That is high hopes for it. That there will be school separation between.
We're on. Okay, gonna open the hearing back up. Next up, we have item four C. It's a coastal development permit, number two four dash zero one four and variance number two four dash zero two five. I'm not going to read the rest of them. It's an application for a new single family residence and associated development. It's a continued hearing from October twentieth. The address is twenty thousand two hundred and twenty two Pacific Coast Highway. Do we have a staff report on that, please?
Yes, Richard, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, great. Thank you. Good evening, Chair Leonard, members of the planning commission. I'll try to make this as brief as possible tonight. And start out with the CDP twenty four fourteen, the three variances previously articulated. Twenty four twenty five, twenty four twenty six and twenty four twenty seven, and an offer to dedicate lateral access along the beach. The vicinity map on the screen showing the exact location of the site along west side of Coast Highway. And the Big Rock Beach area. And then we have a plot plan showing the pre-fire home footprints. Where the exist, where the proposed project will be placed. Next slide, please. Just a little entitlement history. This project was previously approved back in twenty eighteen. It was appealed to city council in twenty nineteen. Due to no, not getting three affirmative votes at that meeting, it was approved under minute order. And then went to the California Coastal Commission and approved in twenty twenty one of November. In a de novo hearing. The issue to, the notice of intent to issue permit was given by the coastal commission. And during the entire, or the building permit process, the California Coastal Commission approval expired. Where the city had a three year expiration, coastal commission only had a two year. So that's the reason why it's coming back in front of this body at this time. Next slide, please. And previously approved and what's in front of you again is a application for construction of a two thousand five hundred and thirty six square foot, two story, single family residence. With attached two car garage, a rooftop deck, retaining wall, seawall, and construction of a new onsite wastewater treatment system. The three variances I'll explain in the next slide, please. And the three variances are for construction on slopes steeper than two and a half to one due to landslide activity. A variance to reduce the required factor of safety and a variance to reduce the required amount of unenclosed parking to one space. As well as an offer to dedicate the lateral access easement along the beach. Next slide, please. And just a real quick clarification on the staff report and one correction. A site plan review is not required for this project for exceeding eighteen feet in height. Up to twenty four feet for flat roofs or twenty eight feet for pitched roofs as the project is located on the beach. So it's not applicable for this situation. And then on page two, I just wanted to give a quick clarification. It was misrepresented in the report. Showing the finished floor level was incorrectly stated, being one foot above the FEMA floodplain level for a total of twenty two feet. But consistent with the municipal code and the comprehensive wave run-up report, the applicant coastal engineer prepared. The finished floor is actually at twenty four point seven five feet and the city's coastal engineering referral approval confirmed and accepted that finished floor elevation. Next slide, please. And this is a quick close up view of the project site, again, pre-fire situation. Showing the extent of the homes going seaward from Coast Highway and the site to be developed. Next slide. And here's a historical view again, showing an oblique on the bottom right of the site prior to the fire. And the existing homes that were there and then the location along Coast Highway in the Big Rock area. Next slide. The current site conditions, the story poles are still up. I know in the staff report, we had stated that they had been taken down. That was, there's a lot of work going on. So. That was placed in there in the event that they were taken down, but they are still up as of today, is my understanding. And that is the amassing as seen from Coast Highway. Next slide. And then here's a picture of the site plan with setbacks, string lines, pre-fire conditions, showing the building string line, the deck string line. And then the front yard setbacks and the side yard setbacks for the subject property. Next slide. I wanted to go ahead and break down the various floor plans, just for clarity for the public in attendance this evening. This is the lower floor plan. So this will be the most seaward portion of the structure. Next slide. And then we have the proposed first floor plan, which includes the garage coming off of Coast Highway. And then a portion of the living area above the floor below previously shown. Next slide. And then this is the second floor plan showing the rooftop deck above the two stories seaward. And then the living area above the garage area. Next slide, please. And then I just wanted to throw in the roof plan for clarity, showing the rooftop deck area that is stepped down above the rooftop. On the portion closest to PCH. Next slide. And then this is a east elevation perspective showing the stepping of the structure to maintain two stories throughout. Which was previously approved as well. And next slide, please. And then a cross section perspective showing how the, the living areas are set up in the step situation along Coast Highway. Showing the small living area above the garage and then the two living areas above each other with the rooftop deck. Next slide, please. Here's a elevation rendering, again, showing pre-fire conditions with the homes that were previously there. I don't know what the status is on the rebuild for those structures, but just wanted to provide the amassing for continuity and context purposes. Next slide. For correspondence, staff has received two letters or we've received two opposition. From two different persons in the public. And one of the persons actually submitted two sets of correspondence. So those have all been forwarded to you. The applicant, Justin Block, he has also provided responses and correspondence to the commission. I believe in response to those letters of opposition. And then the most important one is the letter that we received, our email received from the California Coastal Commission. Which say they had no objections to the project as proposed and appreciate the offer to dedicate public access. So attesting that it's the same project that was previously approved by this body. Appealed to city council and eventually approved by California Coastal Commission. Next slide, please. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution determining the project is categorically exempt from CEQA. And approving coastal development permit twenty fourteen, twenty four fourteen, variance twenty four twenty five, variance twenty four twenty six, variance twenty four twenty seven. And the offer to dedicate twenty four twenty nine. Next slide. And that, that concludes staff's presentation and I'm available for any questions or comments.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'm gonna move on to the applicant, Justin. Let's go do disclosures first.
None. None.
None.
None.
None.
Justin.
The applicant team has actually requested that the owner speak first and she is available to us virtually.
Hello, this is Kate McCullough. Hi, good evening, commissioners and staff. Please accept my sincere apologies for not being there in person. I'm unfortunately sick and I live out of state. But I remain wholeheartedly committed to seeing this project through. Not only because of what it represents architecturally, but because of what it means to my family. Over a decade ago, the late and great architect Tom Torres designed this beautiful home. A vision that captured the timeless essence of Malibu. Seven years ago, I purchased the lot and the plans, which had already been in the city's planning process for three years at that point. My hope was simple and heartfelt to build this home in time for my children to attend Malibu High School and grow up surrounded by this extraordinary community. Since then, we faced just about every challenge imaginable. From neighbor appeals, city and coastal commission delays, to devastating wildfires. And water infrastructure redesigns to the unfortunate missed extension deadline by my late architect. Each setback has come with its share of financial, emotional and logistical strain. And today, after seven years of waiting, my oldest child is now a sophomore at UCLA, still without a home we dreamed of building together. Shortly after witnessing the devastating fire from devastation from the fire. I listed the property and plans because of the uncertainty of what would happen. And I wasn't sure I had the stomach to go through this process again. On my most recent visit, seeing the pelicans nesting and the dolphins jumping. I realized that the nature, that nature and beauty of Malibu remain intact and my resolve to build this home has never been stronger. In fact, I'm more determined and more grateful than ever. I want to extend my deepest appreciation to the city staff and commissioners for their time, professionalism and patience. I know the missed extension created additional work and frustration for everyone involved and I'm sincerely sorry for that. Your efforts to help move this project back on track mean the world to me and I want you to know how truly grateful I am. I deeply respect the process and responsibility you carry to protect Malibu's integrity. While allowing families like mine the opportunity to become part of it. And lastly, in hindsight, I found perspective and even gratitude in the delays. Because had everything gone according to plan, my home would likely have stood in the path of the wildfires that tore through Big Rock Beach. And I might be standing here today as one of the many trying to rebuild from ashes. So while the journey has been long and full of obstacles, it has also been humbling and full of lessons. I remain deeply hopeful that tonight marks a turning point, one that allows my family to finally move forward and bring this long intended home to life. Thank you all truly for your time and understanding and compassion.
Go ahead, Justin.
Chair Leonard, members of the commission, Justin Block, on behalf of the property owner CKGD Heritage Trust and the beneficial owners Chad and Kate McCullough. I'm too going to try to be quick and save the rest of my time for rebuttal, as I know there's a handful of people here speaking in opposition. As Kate said, this project comes before you for reconsideration. It's gone through extensive review and approval at multiple levels demonstrating its compliance with applicable codes, mandates. demonstrating its compliance with applicable codes, mandates, policies, Coastal Act, LCP. It was approved by the Planning Commission in two thousand eighteen, approved by the City Council on appeal in two thousand nineteen, approved by the Coastal Commission in two thousand and twenty-one. All these entities independently reviewed the project for consistency with LCP, the Coastal Act. They reviewed and analyzed the concerns brought by the project opponents who have appealed this project at every hearing and every step of the way, and at each time, the project is found to be consistent with LCP and the Coastal Act. This includes the review and making the CDP findings and the findings for the three variances. And I just want to be clear about the variances. There's been a lot of talk in correspondence opposing the project about the size of the structure, about the amassing and the scale. We are not asking for a variance or a deviation from the code that relates to the height, size, or mass. Everything we are proposing is by right pursuant to the development standards for beachfront properties in Malibu. The variances are solely to allow this property to be developed in a similar fashion to all the other neighboring properties. As you heard, Coastal Commission ended up hearing this on de novo. They found substantial issue in two thousand and twenty-one and then had a de novo hearing immediately after. They performed their independent research and evaluated the project for consistency with the Coastal Act. The Coastal Commission, what they didn't do in the substantial issue hearing, was find a substantial issue with any concerns brought by the neighboring property owners about height, size, amassing, or neighborhood character. The issues that the Coastal Commission had with regard to the project had to deal with sea level rise. Commissioner Ramaza, in two thousand and eighteen, you were the one dissenting vote on the Planning Commission, and I believe your concerns related to sea level rise. When this project went to the Coastal Commission, the Coastal Commission wanted the property owner and the team to utilize the most up-to-date science, which was the two thousand and eighteen sea level rise guidelines. When this project was originally, when the original project was originally filed, it was two thousand and fifteen, and it was before those guidelines came to be. So the project team worked with the Coastal Commission, worked with their coastal engineers and their geologists. They redesigned the project to account for the updated science in the two thousand and eighteen sea level rise guidelines. So the only changes to the project that were made from when the Planning Commission and the City Council approved this project at the city level was to account for the updated science to raise the finished floor elevation to account for the rise in sea level rise and the change in science. The project was ultimately approved by the Coastal Commission, and the Coastal Commission, as Richard said, submitted a letter of support stating that the project that is before you tonight on reconsideration was the same project that they previously approved in two thousand and twenty-one, and they had no objections to the project. You heard from Ms. McCullough, after the Coastal Commission's approval in two thousand and twenty-one, the team began to work with the city to satisfy the conditions of approval from the Coastal Commission in dealing with the Water District. They submitted to plan check. I believe they had actually the Building Department stamp of approval on the plans, but they continued to work with the other city departments in the Water District. Nothing before you tonight has changed since the Coastal Commission approved these plans and since the Building Department stamped the plans. Kate touched on it a little bit. Rest in peace, Tom Torres. Unfortunately, unbeknownst to anyone on our team, or I think anyone in the city, he became very, very sick when they were trying to satisfy the conditions of approval. He had someone from his office come to the city and figure out when the CDP was bound to expire. The city told him that it was gonna expire in three years because that's what the conditions of approval said for the city. However, what they neglected to tell Tom Torres' employee was that the Coastal Commission's conditions of approval that had the CDP expire in two years took precedence because it was approved in the de novo review. So the team, operating in good faith, was trying to satisfy the conditions of approval and working with the various departments, and when they resubmitted their plans to the city, that's when they found out their CDP had expired. At that point, we tried to reactivate the CDP and do anything we could, and we were told the only thing we could do is file a brand-new CDP for the same exact project, and it would be fast-tracked. It's taken us eighteen months to get to a hearing for a project that has been previously approved and reviewed by every single department and took us eighteen months to get here. Sorry, this is taking a lot longer than I thought. But in sum, what we're asking for you guys tonight is to be consistent and approve this project similar to the Planning Commission did in two thousand and eighteen, similar to the City Council did in two thousand and nineteen, and similar to the Coastal Commission did in two thousand and twenty-one. I will leave the rest of the time for rebuttal. I have the new architect, David Rihanna, here, and the coastal engineer, Reg Brown, here if there's any questions pertaining to that. Thank you very much.
Okay, I have a couple of questions in regards to the speaker forums. Darren Graves and Doreen Graves, are they, so Ryan, okay, Ryan, you're gonna be giving a minute to Darren, right? Is that correct? Okay, and then Doreen, and then, so, and Reg, you're gonna hear for rebuttal?
Yes.
Okay, and then we have Joe and Jan. Okay, all right. So let's go open it up to public comment. Let's have Joe go first. It's good to have four minutes.
We have a slideshow.
If we could put it on the display.
Okay. Hello, Chair, Commissioners and Staff. Had I known the codes as well as I know them now, this project likely would not have proceeded six years ago when it first started. Now that we have new leadership in Planning Department, hopefully these non-compliant projects don't continue to delay fire rebuilds that need all the focus right now. Oh, what's being described as a two-story home at two zero two 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 PCH is in fact a three-story structure standing fifty-eight feet above the beach per city's own staff report and the applicant's presentation. That exceeds Malibu's limits by a wide margin. The property was only until yesterday listed for sale at two point six million, so the claim that its owner occupied rebuild is misleading at best. When the original story poles were installed, they had to be removed because they encroached into live power line clearance, proof that the building itself is too tall for the site. The plans make it plain, a garage level over fourteen feet tall with a lower level with two bedrooms around nine feet high, a main level above this with a primary suite, two walk-in closets, and a bath about eight feet tall, and a third floor containing the living room, dining room, and kitchen with a fourteen-foot ceiling and large ocean deck. From the lowest bedroom level to the ceiling above, the interior height exceeds thirty-one feet. A structure that tall and fifty-eight feet above the beach cannot reasonably be described as a two-story home. It violates both the letter and the spirit of Malibu's code and its vision to protect neighborhood scale and coastal character. The LIP three point six is explicit, and no event shall the maximum number of stories above grade be greater than two. And a basement is not considered a story only if the finished first floor does not exceed three feet above natural grade. Here, a possibly so-called basement sits five feet above grade, so it's a story. Either way, basements are not allowed on beachfront parcels at all under Malibu LIP three point six K three. The same section limits flat-roof beachfront structures to twenty-four feet in high and requires height to be a portion from the road center line that cannot exceed half the building's total length. This proposal ignores both standards. Its dome and full roof line, full-height roof line clearly violates the twenty-four-foot limit and creates a continuous wall facing PCH. This is also not a fire rebuild. The prior house slid into the ocean after the nineteen eighty-three Big Rock landslide. It was lost to slope failure, not fire. That matters because this is new development on a known landslide site, not recovery on stable ground. Granting a variance here would be a special privilege, and that finding cannot legally be made. The project starts lower than its neighbor at two zero two two four PCH, now twenty-four point five feet above sea level versus twenty-seven feet, which will worsen beach erosion and a slope instability. That neighbor's rebuild sits higher, yet remains under twelve feet along PCH-preserving views. This project, by contrast, rises more than thirty feet above PCH, nearly three times taller than nearby homes within five hundred feet, creating a wall-like mass that dominates the coast. At just three feet, four inches of side setback, it also raises major fire safety concerns, especially given this corridor's recent wildfire destruction. Many nearby homeowners have reduced their home amassing to increase defensible space. This project does the opposite. In short, this project is too tall, too many stories, too close, and too unstable for this site. Calling it a two-story rebuild is misleading, and it mirrors the misrepresentation that led council to reject the Malibu Inn Hotel, which also falsely claimed to be two stories when it was actually four. This project stands for outside the spirit of Malibu's vision and mission statements, which call for protecting the city's rural coastal character, scenic beauty, and resident safety. I respectfully urge the commission to send it back for redesign to meet code as a two-story structure, not three. Limit height to twenty-four feet from the first level and ensure any new construction fits Malibu's coastal standards and values. Thank you for your time, your attention, and your continued dedication to protecting Malibu's integrity and its fire-impacted families.
Thank you. All right, Darren.
Good evening, Commissioners. I also have a presentation.
Can I have the display?
Thank you. Well, thank you for taking the time to hear my issues with the proposed CDP twenty-four zero one four. The issues are plentiful as they align with everything that I presented to you seven years ago, last time I was here before you. Much has changed in those seven years. Unfortunately, much of the city has burned, including my family's home, which is adjacent to this home or this proposed home. The exhibit in front of you shows the proposed sun study in the morning. As Joe described, the proposed house is obviously much higher than all the neighboring properties, and in the morning, it would completely block any light from hitting the east side of my family's rebuild. In the evening, it would completely block any sunset view from every house to the east of it, much like a three-story house stole the sunset view from the Sutton family over at the Big Rock Tide Pools when it was constructed in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. Allowing such an abomination about a mile away from that three-story abomination is repeating bad past behavior by Malibu planning. How do you change slides out there? Okay. So these are the story poles. As you can see, they are higher than the current telecom lines. That proposes a fire risk. I would ask that if the Planning Commission, this is the old, our family property and the proposed lot, if the Plan Commission does approve this, which I guess you could, considering the lawyer did say that it is legal, please put conditions on it to make it a fire-hardened structure. The current proposal is a type-five structure with stucco siding and large expanses of glass. The glass does not appear to be fire-rated or tempered in any way. This is essentially a tinderbox that'll be right next to my family's rebuild within five feet of our exterior finished wall. Our rebuild will be fire-hardened. It'll be two-hour fire-rated on all sides. This doesn't appear to be that way. If you do allow it, please send a message that every home in the very high fire hazard severity zone should be designed in a manner to withstand wildfires, considering they're gonna be coming through our neighborhood every five to ten years. And inviting mansions on the beach, which are not in keeping with the design standard that we should all be abiding by, is an insult to rebuilders, but also an insult to CAL FIRE and the CBSC, considering WII guidelines are now in Chapter seven A of the CFC, and I think everybody rebuilding should be choosing to comply with them. Finally, California Civil Statute gives every homeowner reasonable expectations for privacy. The proposed rebuild takes away those reasonable expectations. As you can see with these perspectives, the roof deck as proposed will allow the homeowners to look in on every adjacent property within a hundred feet on either side, considering the roof deck is twenty-four feet above the finished floor of my family's proposed rebuild and the finished floor heights of every other property that will presumably be rebuilt. I know you don't really judge on neighborhood character, but every rebuild will probably be eleven feet tall in maximum height, considering they're gonna use like-for-like standards or like-for-like plus ten percent. And every home along this stretch of Big Rock Beach was ten or ten and a half feet above the sidewalk. The proposed house is thirty feet above the sidewalk, which is a manipulation of the MMC, considering they're using the height of the midpoint of PCH to determine the twenty-eight-foot height limit. Well, PCH at our property, the center line is twenty-seven inches above the sidewalk. So they're taking advantage of this massive arc in PCH, which rebuilders are not gonna be taking advantage of. So our rebuild is gonna be eleven feet tall. This is gonna be thirty feet tall. It is almost three times the height of our rebuild and the rebuilds within eyesight on PCH. So if you're gonna consider what does Malibu want to be, I guess the question is, is that my time?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Doreen?
I'm so sorry we're all having to spend time again on this proposed build. I'm DeeDee Graves. My family home of over fifty years was next door at two oh two two four PCH and next door to this mansionization that they are trying to propose. Seven years ago, we appealed to the Planning Commission not to approve it, but they did. This is a three-story house, not two stories, as noticed in the mailer. The height on the highway side is at the maximum allowed. Every other home on Big Rock Beach was one-story. We are in the process of rebuilding our home like-for-like, one level, exactly the same as it was. The City of Malibu Land Use Plan Policy six point seven says that beachfront lots, the maximum height is twenty-four feet above grade with a flat roof. This is not adhered to in these proposed plans, neither the height nor the flat roof. The Coastal Commission, four years ago, approved the plan with seventeen contingencies. The attorney didn't say that, seventeen contingencies for them to be able to build it. We want Big Rock Beach to keep its low-key neighborhood atmosphere. This is proposed new build is totally out of character to the area. And you're allowing mansions to come in, and it's just so different than what we had. Thank you.
All right, would you guys like to rebut?
We do also have a virtual speaker.
Oh, I'm so sorry, okay.
And this is Michael Ballor.
How many speakers do we have?
We have one.
Okay.
Hi, how are you, everybody? I just was up at around, what time is it now, ten-thirty? Just watching my every-other-week Planning Commission meeting, and I just wanted to comment on this particular item. I know there's a lot of pushback, and I just wanted to speak to the applicant and wish them good luck with their build. I know it's a little out of the ordinary with the size and the height, and I know there's concerns, but if you think this is the end of the road and if you get approved here, it's the end of the story and you'll be cleared, don't believe that, because somehow, some way, someone's gonna appeal you. Somehow, some way, it's gonna add another twelve months to your timeline, and somehow, some way, your kid's gonna end up being probably twenty-six years old by the time the house is built. So I wish you good luck, and I wish that there could be a resolution where everyone's happy. Even if you do get conditions attached to your home to get it approved, they won't care. They'll still appeal you. So good luck, and that's all I wanted to really say tonight, because I've been a victim of the same conditions of approval, and the process is definitely painstaking, but you just gotta stick with it. And yes, good luck, and good night to everybody.
Thank you.
Well, I guess first off, I should thank Michael for staying up. That was very unexpected, so thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna be really quick. Neighbor concerns. One, owner misled the city, never intended to build. You heard from Ms. McCullough, that's clearly not the case. She couldn't build because she couldn't get a building permit because there was a miscommunication between the city and her architect's office in terms of when the CDP expired. We don't wanna be here. Like, this is an unfortunate situation for everyone. We're giving the project opponents a fourth bite of the apple and probably a fifth bite of the apple when they appeal it and delay us another year. So this is not someplace we wanna be. Concerns about community character and visual resources. These were the same arguments that were made in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty-one. It's been analyzed, it's been vetted by the Planning Commission, City Council, and the Coastal Commission. Project was ultimately approved. I don't wanna sound inconsiderate when I say this, but the truth is, we don't know what the community character's gonna be for this beach moving forward. We don't know if people are gonna ever rebuild. We don't know if they're gonna choose to do like-for-like, and we don't, or we don't know if they're gonna bring forth a code-compliant project like this. We just don't know what that character of the community is gonna be, and I think that is the truth. But what we do know is that when the Coastal Commission analyzed this in two thousand and twenty-one, they stated that the proposed project would be visually compatible with the character of the existing surrounding area. So the Coastal Commission did look at this. They did look at all the properties in the vicinity, and they said that it did meet the community character. Rooftop deck. Rooftop decks are allowed by code, and in this specific instance, we're trying to recoup some outdoor-
we're trying to recoup some outdoor area, given that the proposed structure is set back 18 feet from their neighbors. The neighbors' properties are built on state lands. We are complying with the code that requires a 10-foot setback from the most landward mean height tideline. So if they want to allow us to build on state lands, maybe we wouldn't have rooftop deck, but we're not afforded that possibility now. The variances, these variances are needed to construct a house similar to all the neighboring properties. The site characteristics are no different on our site than all the other sites. They all don't meet the 1.5 factor of safety. They all slope to have a steep slope from PCH to the beach from the cut when they made PCH, and most properties do not supply the four parking spaces. We have two enclosed, and we're asking for a variance to have one unenclosed because we can't utilize the view corridors on the side to park cars. So we're asking for a reduction. In 2018, when this came before the planning commission, we provided exhibit saying if we needed to show four parking spaces, we'd lose half of the habitable space on the ground level. It's not feasible. The talk about mansionization, the habitable area of this house is 2,100 square feet. It's by no stretch a mansion. 25, including the garage. To Ms. Drummond's comments, story poles. As far as I know, the story poles remain. They were always up. They were certified. Pictures were taken. The city story pole policy has a provision that allows the city some discretion to remove story poles if they believe they're a safety hazard. Ours are still up to this day. The issue with the fire department and setbacks. This project meets the setbacks contained in the development standards in LIP, and they've been approved. And the fire department also approved this twice. They approved it in 2015, and they signed a new referral letter, excuse me, referral letter in July 2025 after the Palisades fire. So the fire department looked at this, looked at the setbacks, and they had no issue with it. The whole discussion about stories and heights. The code, as Ms. Drummond says, said that there should not be more than two stories at any one point. So the question is, at any one point, are there more than two stories? And if you look at the definition of stories, the answer is no. The height, you split the structure in half. The landward side is measured from the center line of PCH. If you measure our, the garage and the area above it, that's a stack, two stories. Barrel roof is less than 28 feet from the center line of PCH. You take the ocean side half, right? You have the lower level and the main level in a rooftop deck. Rooftop deck does not meet the definition of a story because it doesn't have a roof on it. So that's another stack with two stories from the finished floor elevation at 24.75 to the railing at the rooftop deck. It's about 21 feet. So that's under the 24 height limit on the ocean side. Stories that contacts, this is not a fire rebuild. Ms. Drummond is correct. What she is incorrect about is that this property failed in a slide and fell into the ocean. The property was damaged after the El Nino storms in 82, 83. They gave the property owner at that time the ability to repair it or remove it. They submitted a demolition permit, excuse me, they applied for a demo permit, and they received a demo permit, and they removed the house. It didn't slide into the ocean. Mr. Graves spoke about light and solar access and views. Solar access is not part of any CDP or variance finding. My understanding is to analyze the solar access of a property that is for an SPA or a site plan review finding. Our project does not have a site plan review pending for this project, so it's not applicable. He talks about blocking sunsets from their house, but I think beachfront properties' views are protected by string line standards. Our property is set back 18 feet from the previously existing houses on either side. We are literally in a gully. Our rooftop deck is 18 feet landward from their property. That being said, I am running out of time. Do you have anything to say? Sorry. Respectfully request you to follow past city action, coastal commission action, and approve the project. All the findings have already been made. You've got 15 seconds, buddy.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Reg Brown. I'm the coastal engineer from the beginning of this project, and I'm here just to answer any technical questions you may have regarding the design process of this house.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to bring it back up to the dais here in open hearing. All right, who would like to go first?
Can we have just some staff clarification on some of the points that Joe did bring up about it being three stories, 58 feet tall, and that that exceeds Malibu's limits? Do you have any clarification on that and also primary view determination on beachfront?
Sure. So as the applicant mentioned, for beachfront properties, you cut the building in half. The landward half gets measured from the center line of the road, which would be center line of PCH. So it does account for the curvature of the road. On the seaward half, it gets measured from the lowest recommended finished floor. And in this case, what they have is basically two sections. One that is compliant when measured from PCH, cut that in half, and the lower half is compliant as measured from the lowest recommended finished floor. It's not dissimilar from hillside projects where they do a stacked design, where they have multi-levels. But, you know, one elevation is up here and another elevation is up here, and they follow the topography. That's what they're utilizing in this application.
So they're, is it sort of like they're, they are with, they're not exceeding the limits?
They're consistent with the way height has been measured on beachfront properties and in general in the city.
Can I ask you a question, Tyler? So has there any, is there anything that has substantially changed that we should be aware of for the entire process that this project has already gone through? Is there anything different in our codes? Are we looking at anything different than what this project has gone through from the planning commission to the appeals to city council to the coastal commission to the letter from the coastal commission to, is there something new that we should need to be educated on?
In terms of the physical design of the structure, no. Height setbacks, all of that is the same. What has been adopted since then is some new restrictions on landscaping, which this project I don't think has really much of, and dark sky lighting, which this is conditioned to comply with.
I have a question. Some of Dylan's comments about the fire rating, aren't all new construction required to have tempered windows and a special? Yeah.
I don't think we have the expertise in the House to answer that question tonight.
That's a building and safety question?
Yes.
Okay.
John has a question.
Go ahead, John.
Oh. Has, since the permit expired, a lot of this staff report is basically based on the prior approval, which is pretty old. Has the FEMA floodplain changed at all? Is it the same as the fire rebuilds are using?
They do have to comply with FEMA. If you wish, Reg would, can speak to that a little better from an engineering standpoint.
Okay.
Thanks for asking that question, John. The FEMA maps were produced in 2016, and we conform to those FEMA maps. They were adopted, formally adopted in 2021. The house does extend into a VE zone on the FEMA map, so we have to comply with the BFE. Now, the BFE in this area is elevation 21. Per the City of Malibu Public Works Department, we have to add one foot onto that. So at 22, that represents not the finished floor elevation, but the bottom of the lowest horizontal structural member. Finished floor is going to be above that. So that elevation, BFE plus one, represents the bottom of, say, the beam, the horizontal beam, supporting the floor structure above that. And we conform, as it is submitted to the city today, we conform to all the FEMA requirements.
Okay, and the wave uprush study hasn't changed since 2015?
The wave uprush study has changed slightly due to sea level rise, changes in the sea level rise. The original project was designed for a sea level rise of 6.15 feet. And we left that there because the elevation was, the run-up elevation on that was at 26, but that was up at the road. So you'll notice how the building rises as you get closer to the road. The wave uprush goes up underneath.
Okay.
And the current sea level rise for what we're doing for, for instance, the fire rebuilds for a 100-year sea level rise, coastal commission report of 2024 actually lowered the sea level rise expectations to 4.5 feet for the year 2126.
So you're actually above, above what the rebuilds have to do?
We are slightly above that, yes.
Okay, and do you have anything to do with the geology?
No.
No, okay.
I have a couple of questions maybe for Justin or the architect in regards to the fire resiliency of the new build.
Hi, I'm David Ray from Residential Design Works.
Okay, so what are the requirements for new construction in regards to fire resiliency?
So what they're presenting, because I'm not the original architect on the project. I was brought in recently on it, and I review the existing plans. And the stucco obviously is a one-hour on all sides. The windows, as far as I know, any, I have to review the plan because I didn't follow the plan. But as far as the fire for the windows, if they're tempered, that's all that matters. And if that's the element that, you know, when we go through building and safety, because we're going to have to take this back to building safety and everything else because of the code changes and so forth, so, and also with fire. So basically, what's going to happen is if they have to be tempered, then they'll be tempered glass. It doesn't require, unless they're in a fire zone four, which I believe they are, it has to be tempered. So they're going to be tempered.
Yeah.
So.
That's what I, that's what I thought. That's what I just, you know, he brought up the concern.
Yeah, he said that the windows aren't tempered, but in a fire zone four, they have to be dual pane tempered.
Yeah, that, okay, thank you.
Yes, and they will be.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask the city attorney a question? If you look at deed restriction number 102 in the resolution, it, it, and I'm not an attorney, obviously, but it restricts the property owner to be liable for everything. But it doesn't say anything about the successors. Shouldn't it say something about the successors? Or notification of successors? Because if they, if they flip the house, this is in a.
Would that go to any property owner, property owner of record at any time?
Yeah, I could, I could lead off, maybe, Colin. So this is our standard deed restriction language for this type of project that is along the coastline, and it follows the property because it's recorded, it's recorded on the title.
But it doesn't, it may be recorded, but it isn't recorded against anybody other than the current property owner.
It's written against the address.
It's recorded against the property, so anyone that buys it, buys it with that deed restriction limit.
Okay, so that doesn't need to be changed. And then this is for Tyler, the the lighting restriction, and I've got to find that.
It has to be dark sky compliant.
Yeah, but it, but there's a questionable area there. Yeah, but dark sky compliant is different. What, let me find it here.
Well, he's finding it. Can I just ask about the privacy issue that Darren brought up? That, is there any protection on privacy that they're going to be kind of? He was saying the roof deck compromises the privacy of all the neighbors.
There's no direct findings you need to make related to privacy. Previous planning commissions have imposed conditions to help protect the neighbor, so that's something you guys can consider.
Is there? Yeah.
Well, it's hard on this one because the, I mean, right, well, and the house, the proposed house will kind of look over the other houses, you know. But on other projects where there's like elimination of glass on one side and windows on one side to kind of keep privacy, there's putting a screen on the deck for one property to keep, you know, the visual out of their, out of their backyard. So there's different mechanisms depending on what the visual is trying to achieve.
You have a question? I have a question for you, Tyler. This is more about just the fire rebuilds on the beachside. So if someone decided to do a CDP and build something bigger on their fire rebuild lot, would they be losing their, some of the aspects of the governor's order or some of the, like, for example, the septic or that type of thing?
Yes, they would not be consistent with the governor's order, so they would have to basically follow the same path that this applicant is proposing.
So, okay.
I found my question, if I could. On the, on number 2020 of the, which is lighting starts at 15, and number 20, it, it's unclear to me on rooftop decks, I'm very, there's been a lot of complaints about rooftop decks on that stretch of the beach from people looking down on them. And it says motion sensors shall be programmed to extinguish 10 minutes after activation. But it doesn't, that appears to be related to number 19. And what I'd like to do is make it clear and say that, that that applies to the rooftop deck. It has to be a motion sensor, motion sensor activated. And the way I read this, just because it's the next number, it says string lights are allowed, and then the next one is motion sensors shall be programmed.
They are not connected, 19 and 20 conditions, but you can certainly add that, but I don't know.
So I could add a condition.
Yeah, you can. And I just want to point out 21 real quick, Commissioner Maza, that the dark sky ordinance does not allow lighting above 18 feet on residential properties. So 21 will capture that, and we have this specific thing only if required by building code, because sometimes an egress light on a deck is required, but other than that.
That's what I would, that's, I was, wasn't going to rely on that because people are going to light up their, their rooftop decks. I mean, why do they have them if they're not going to light them?
That would be prohibited.
It would be prohibited because it's over 18 feet with the rooftop deck, because you're not allowed to do that. They're only going to be allowed one light fixture for ingress and egress of the door up there.
Is that something that somebody could enforce if somebody lit it up?
That is, yeah, not only a condition of approval, but that is within the ordinance that would be a code enforcement violation.
They won't be able, they won't be able to build it even.
Because I know there's complaint, complaint about a house there that's, okay. And then number 25, it says they have to have their, their beachfront stairs, three-foot setback from the property lines. Okay, but this has got a horizontal access, public easement. And I would assume that you're not going to put stairs in the public easement. So shouldn't that say, not from the property line, but from the easement line?
Richard, correct me if I'm wrong. Is there a vertical access easement on this project?
It's a lateral access easement, extortion is what it should be called.
Lateral access, not vertical.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. You're not allowed to put, yes, you're not allowed to put structures within the easement. So if we want to make that clarification, we could add that to the condition.
Okay, so, so if I just change the word property line to easement line, that would be, that would fix it?
You can even just say no development is authorized within the lateral access easement.
Is that something I should have attorney do, or we want to do it on the fly?
I think Tyler's recommendation, instead of changing 24, just add to the end of 24. Sorry, on minus 24, 25.
Okay.
If you want to read that. No development in the lateral.
Yeah, no development is authorized in the lateral access easement.
Yeah, so add that to 25.
Okay. I have a question. Callan or Tyler, what is the reason for the lateral access easement of this property?
I would not be able to answer that because.
It's just, it's just public access along, along the coast.
Did Coastal say that that was a requirement of their condition of approval?
Yes.
They did.
Yeah. It typically is when you get to that level. We don't always require at the city level.
Totally extortion.
The coastal commission.
It is total extortion.
It's extortion is something nobody's ever going to use. It's extortion is something nobody's ever going to use. You have to get 1,700 feet of lateral accesses, okay? So it's.
You're going to be chipping away at them with each fire rebuild that comes in for a CDP.
They don't have to get a CDP. They get stamped by Tyler.
As long as you like for like plus 10%, let's make sure that's clear.
Yeah.
Can I make a motion to approve item 4C?
I, I second that with the addition of the language to number 25.
And Commissioner Peak, you're accepting that?
Yep.
And Chair, is it okay for me to call the roll?
Yep, roll call, please.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Cammons?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I move adjourn.
Can I ask if there's any appetite to at least, to at least ask whether or not commissioners have any issues that they feel will require substantive discussion for, by A?
I'm good to go forward with it.
Last item, the smallest project on the whole agenda tonight.
We have no public speakers slipped as well.
Okay, let's go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a staff report, please? I'm sorry, let me read it first. Next up is 5A, it's a coastal development permit number 24-068 and minor modification number 25-006. An application for an addition and remodel of a single family residence at 24840 Pacific Coast Highway. Do you have a staff report?
Right, good evening, Chair Leonard, members of the planning commission. We made it. So, yeah, they added before you is a CDP 2468 with a minor modification request for a reduction in the side yard setback. Okay, this property is located at 24840 PCH. You see here on the screen. This is just south of PCH, north of Malibu Road, west of Bluffs Park. As you can see, it's surrounded by a similar single family residential development east and west. This, I chose this picture because the purple here shows the appeal available jurisdiction. So the southern portion of this property contains the main residence and that is located within the appealable jurisdictions. So project for you is an exterior remodel with a minor addition to existing single family residents. That includes a demolition to 32% of exterior walls, 267 square foot addition, which is about 5.7% over existing. And a partial roofline alteration, increasing height from 10.5 feet to 15 feet maximum. There's also a conversion of 162 square feet of concrete driveway to a firm book gravel and two underpinning, two piles underpinning along the southern facade as well as an interior remodel. And there's also a discretionary request, like I mentioned, for up to a 20% reduction to the west side yard setback. Okay, so now why is this a CDP? There's a, there's two reasons for that. There's a future improvements deed restriction issued by the coastal commission in 2003 that requires a CP for significant improvements to the property. In addition to that, there's a larger than 10% increase in height to the main residence. As I pointed out earlier, it's 10.5 feet to 15 feet, so that's definitely more than 10%. And this is located in the appealable jurisdiction, so that, that applies, so. And also as part of this application, we've got the minor modification, which is needed to accommodate the, the proposed vertical bulk that's along the western portion of the property that does encroach one foot into the required side yard setback. Okay, so here's the proposed plan. So it's a, it's a long kind of skinny lot, but north to the right, you got the ocean to the left. And this shows the, the main residence, you've got the, then accessory structure further north. You got the driveway, then you've got, as we go further north, we've got the pool, poolhouse, tennis court, more driveway, and then you get to the PCH area of the property. So some more depictions of the plans here. So on the left, we've got the exterior remodel portion showing the demolition to exterior walls. So you've got your demo replaced in blue and your demo. And then to accommodate the addition shown in red, so you have those up, you get 32% of the exterior walls. To the right, that shows where the new vertical bulk is proposed. So there's a larger portion to the, to the back of the house and a smaller portion closer to the, the southern facade. And again, this house is only 10.5 feet tall, so it's a minor increase in height to one portion and a few feet more on the other section. So here are some elevations to help show where those additions are. Again, the topic that the southern elevation. So therefore the western side is where the, the taller part is proposed, a 15 feet tall portion. And then on the eastern side, you got the roughly 12 foot tall portion. The lower part of the screen here, we get western elevation. So that shows again the, the proposed vertical bulk located to the back of the house. And then that smaller portion a little bit further to the east. Okay, like I said earlier, there's some underpinning proposed as part of this application. We've got two piles proposed. Now, we looked at this carefully when this came in because, you know, this is considered in, you know, increased foundation. And we want to be cognizant of, of the bluff top setback. So we used the bluff top analysis that was from 10 years ago for the same property. There are actually two applications, I think, two, one in 2013, one in 2015 that proposed a new house that was further north that complied with the bluff top setback. It was totally moved. This is, you know, the original house, as you can see, a good portion of the house is, is within that setback. However, we want to be sure that these piles that are proposing are at least 50 feet away. So this exhibit shows that. Okay, so correspondence, we've got zero letters received in opposition of the project. In closing, we recommend that you adopt planning commission resolution 2579, determining the project is categorically exempt from CEQA and to approve the CDP in minor mod as conditioned or amended by planning commission. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Do you want to do disclosures or?
I have none.
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 Okay. Applicant want to give their presentation? No? Okay. All right, we'll bring it up to the diocese.
I move approval.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Rebecca, vote, roll call?
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Cammons?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations. Marty, Marty, Rebecca, to make a commissioner comment, please.
Not on this project. Just before we adjourn, I did have a, something I wanted to say to Paul's comment at the beginning of the meeting, Paul Grissani. I think we do a really good job and I think we work really well together. Sometimes we're not super polite and people get heated and we're all doing the best we can. And we're maybe not, you know, as well mannered as Paul, but I, I don't think that was warranted to scold us like that. So that's just my thoughts.
I'll, I'll second that.
Harry's.
See, there's a reason why he wasn't reelected.